Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right. Minutes. Does anybody have any additions, corrections?
No.
Not will entertain a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make it.
Motion made by Commissioner Terry Mataro to approve the minutes. Is there a second that we're working on?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Everly. Is there any more discussion on minutes? Not hearing any. All those in favor say aye. Not opposed. Minutes approved. Approving the agenda. Any additions? Corrections? Subtractions? Not hearing any. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
The only thing I would have is Kevin Evansson out there. Some, you know, the lady that he's putting stuff behind the behind motel back there now. And some are worried when if it floods that everything's gonna get flooded away there.
Sure.
But I know there's probably nothing we could do now until it's nice.
Why don't we just talk about that on our old and unfinished business right after this? That's kind of something I'm gonna put on the agenda.
Okay.
Since it's for a kick. So, motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make one.
Motion by Commissioner Everly to approve the agendas. There's a second. Second by Commissioner Holmes. Any more discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor say aye. Not opposed. Old and unfinished business. I guess we can start off with that.
Yeah, I mean, there's just been a few complaints. You know, there still hasn't been cleanup out there, but I mean, I know they can't do it now, but now they're worried about if it floods because he's moving a lot of his stuff behind that.
The old willows?
Yeah. I don't know who owns that or what, but.
I'll talk to the sheriff on that one, I guess.
Well, did they ever allow him to clean that up or?
No, they were supposed to this fall.
No, it snowed too early on this day earlier, so it was gonna probably be this spring sometime, but well, spring doesn't seem much of a heat either so far.
But they were just worried about now the floods, a lot of that stuff might get floated around and.
Great.
Yeah. So I just figured I'd bring it up again, but.
Yeah, well, Joe not being here, it's kinda hard to see what the legal options would be, I guess, or anything like that, other than I know he already kind of started a process with the weather kind of stuff. We were at the point of cleaning it up, so.
Who's gonna do that again?
Well, I think we had Trash Incorporated lined up to do that, but if they can't get to it, you know, sometimes reasonable, I guess, with the weather, we'll probably have to figure out some kind of other alternative, I guess, but so.
Okay.
But yeah, probably something redirect to Joe. Next chance we get to see what the process is after and what the options are.
Okay.
So. Any other old or unfinished business? Not. I think we can move to the variance. For setback for building permit for Mike Deer Wester to erect a thirty-six by forty-eight garage on Lot One, Block Nine, Tembik Road. Section five, township one thirty-three, range seventy-six. Wanna come up, Mike?
Yep, I can go up.
Okay.
Mike, you can jump in. I'll just do a brief overview of what you're doing. So Mike's house is right here. You guys cannot see this, right?
Yep.
Okay. So, he's looking at building a shop or garage. But it might stick out into this right away, but what he's asking, because this road kinda rounded, not put, you know, not put where the road was platted. It's east, like, this is a thirty-three foot on center easement here, so this road is approximately thirty-three feet further east than what it was originally platted for. Um, but kinda curves in around maybe twenty-five feet away from the center line, plus or minus a few feet off, so it could not lines get skewed each year, but. He's looking at building it. We can't get an exact estimate off the road because we're now it's full snow. The exact distance the setback would be from the road. Um, but I think wherever he puts it, it still might stick out into where it's, you know, the easement would be or that right where it would be.
And then you see the barn. Point the barn out to him.
The one that's still there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
See, it's in the
Yeah.
It's in the road right away now.
And then?
And in a well that sits it right behind it that I'm gonna use on the other end of the barn. It's in the road right away, right now, too.
Was there, was that a house or something?
There was a house right there where your finger was.
And is that where you put the shop, right?
Yeah, I tore the house down. I didn't even realize it was you know, technically your house, you know, I mean, I tore it down. And then that's when we started figuring all this road easement stuff out. Yeah, there's the house.
So how old is that barn? I mean, was that put there?
I didn't put it there. I mean, it, you know, I, I don't know, fifties, sixties, forties, I don't know. But that house is, was a lot older than that barn. And you can see where the house is, and that's just about where I wanna build the shop, right? Right where that house sat.
Wonder how that ever came about?
Suppose they went on the same setback as the city lines were.
They probably measured from the road.
Not that, but they didn't recognize it as a county road.
It doesn't look like it's.
Right?
Yeah. It is. At that time, it was city road.
It wasn't a county road when they built the house. It was a city road.
And they probably measured from the road at times. I give rough guess around thirty-five feet from the center road to where that was then. Plus minus a few feet.
It seems like the buildings were set back off the road, which is fine, except the fact the road is in the wrong spot.
Right.
So now the building's in the road or the, so who owns the properties on the east side of that road or like where that road runs through?
I own those two.
Okay.
And then that the guy that owns that's dead.
Okay.
So where you wanna build that garage, who owns to the, is that the east of there?
Right, well, that's where it looks like.
It's on his land, though.
It's a wish hill on the road right away.
Yeah, his land would, yeah, this is all Mike's stuff.
Right. Well, I mean, the question that I have, or the issue is kind of what comes up with almost like the weather situation down at Beaver Bay where if somebody comes in and wants that road moved out of their property, now if you put something in the right of way, now you can't put the road on the right of, you know, you, you almost either have to fix it so the road is in the right place, and then you could allow for those buildings to get built there, or you have to keep the right of way because that road really could get moved. Now, I know Mike owns that one property there, so the road being there's not a big issue, but that property to the north, if someone would come in and be like Latina and them, or they're like, hey, we don't want this road on our property, or then it needs to get moved out to the right of way, I don't know whose responsibility that'd be either, but you kinda have to keep the right of way as it is, or you have to move the right of, you know what I'm saying? Like, if you just allow the buildings to get built there, now you've got buildings and a road in the wrong spot. You either have to make the wrong road, the wrong road location, the right road location. Do you know what I'm trying to say? Because if someone comes in and says, hey, we want that road out of our property, now you put a building on that road right of way.
Well, the barn's already on the road right of way.
I get that, but you could have a scenario where you could almost, they almost force you have to tear it down. Like, if you keep making encroachments on the right of way, you could create a problem. That's why I'm saying that if you allow this variance, you really, in a way, have to solve the road issue too, though, like you.
Hey, if we allow that variance and somebody else can come back and wanna do the same thing.
Well, I'm just saying, my, my point is, is if I'm that property owner there and I know I have this road running through my property, I'm gonna be frustrated and want someone to solve that too, then you get where I'm, and that's the problem I have with it being on someone's property rather than on the right of way. If it was totally on the right of way, even maybe in the wrong location, you could argue you could maybe allow variance, but I mean, the one other thing to do would be to just wait till the snow melts and start getting some measurements and see what kind of options you have. I just, you know, especially with that property, because I just know you, you already have a scenario at Beaver Bay where that's happening.
Yeah.
We all know our issues in the past with granted variance. It's not everybody's happy about them, so.
Yeah, Mike, you go right down.
I mean, that's just the trouble with.
You're gonna run into problems.
I just.
I bet.
We gotta follow the law. Yeah.
Well, I think, I think a scenario, if something would change with that road, you know, whether you acquire that property where the road's running on it or something different, you know, something that would change where there's not multiple landowners affected by it, I think it'd probably be different, but I guess that's my opinion on it, because I mean, especially having, like you said, having that weather property is almost the exact same deal as this, where you have a road going through the property rather than the right of way. Fifty years later, they want the road moved, and it's like, at least there's a right of way to move the road too, where if you don't, if you go.
We don't wanna hit it.
If you have buildings, like even now, that barn really in a lot of ways probably should have to come down. It's not an issue right now, but if that road would have to get moved, that barn is really encroaching on the right of way, so.
And that barn would be grandfathered in, that it was there?
Well, it's hard to say, it's hard to say grandfathered in, because if that road is in the wrong place and it needs to get moved.
But you could use a scenario, and I'm not picking on anyone in particular, but you could take it like Tony Tourist when they built Pauline Bins on the right of, they're on the right of, barn on that road goes around it.
You talking on the?
Just like the right by Tony's itself.
On the west, oh?
Big time.
Well, and I think there's things on the right of way out that don't get me wrong. I'm not picking like we gotta go tear this barn down, but I'm just saying that to to allow other things on there, to continue to allow it like that, knowing that it's been a problem is one thing. It's one thing to accept something that's there. And the road really shouldn't have to get moved, and the barn should be fine where it is, because it's been there before a lot of us, but, but I don't think allowing the continuation of building on it's probably a good idea, knowing that there's something wrong there. That's just my opinion on it, though. I don't, I don't philosophically have a problem with building on these right of ways intended, because the likelihood of it being needed is slim, but at the same time, there's no guarantee, so.
So you can't, can you move that over a little bit farther or not? So it's on the, so it's on your property all the way or what?
No, you can't go outside of it. That barn is right, just to the west. Well, I mean, I can, you know, I've done enough land. I can figure out a different spot for it, but I mean, that would be
The ideal spot.
That would be the spot. It's close to the house, you know, and it, it's, you know, if I go if I go west of the house, where the trees and stuff are, that's kind of boggy in there, so I'm looking at a lot of fill to, to bring that up. And, you know, and then, you know, I wanna keep it close enough to the house for, you know, I ain't getting no younger. I don't wanna have to walk too far to get out to the cars and stuff and but, um, I was gonna build it right where that house sat, which is right there, you know? And.
It's just funny that everything was off so far with that.
Yeah.
I thought it's almost like there was two plats or something. You know what I mean? Like.
But sometimes some of that stuff like, you know, even on those section lines, they Walter Winger, right down there, but he his barn is right on the section line, his house is right on the other side.
Right, I don't, it's kinda odd.
I checked the flats and checked my measurements for my lines and they're right.
Right, but it just seems so odd that it's almost like there's multiple surveys or something, because why they had it in mind, I think that just makes no sense, but.
Pretty lenient, I'm sure, but.
Well, neither they didn't even get a permit, built it where it made sense, and nobody said nothing, right?
I'm sure there were no permits back then.
Well, I suppose not, or you know, whatever, whatever worked, they got it done, I guess, but that's where it's hard to.
Well, I'm sure the road was in there before they ever built that house.
I'm sure they think so, and that's, unless the thing is, yeah, they built the road in the wrong spot, and everybody assumed it's in the right spot, and they measured off the center line of the road roughly, and that's what they were using, but.
Why don't you, once the snow melts, Mike, go out there with you and get an exact measurement from the center of the road to where you plan on doing it, and then come back. That's an option to do. Come back with exact measurement, once we know how far it is from that road, and then determine how much Mike is sticking out that road.
There you go, basically, you wait till it melts. Everybody can see.
I agree. So what about my barn in, in that well that sits behind it? You know, I got bought a windmill set on that well. Can I get a variance for that, for its for that, or, you know, or what? That's not it, but.
In the back, you can see a roof up there back there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Your house would be like right here? This is
Okay, yeah.
Going south, Washington going south.
I think the smart thing to do right now would probably be just to table this and let the weather clear a little bit and kind of get a look out there, see what's going on, because it'd be nice to take a look at some of them, I mean, even some of the other streets that you were you guys were petitioning to close to and take a look at.
That's the street.
Right, that's where, you know.
You know, I mean, that, the one reason I wondered, I mean, what was it, it's not in the, no one uses it, you know? And anyway, I didn't think that'd be a big poof the law thing. I still don't think it is, but.
Well, just the one thing we found out is there's some things that are a big deal to some people, and then it becomes a big deal to others, though. That's one thing we found out recently, just with other issues, fence lines and things like that. Things that don't seem like a big deal end up becoming a big deal, so.
Well, I didn't know of the fence line thing, and, you know, I mean, obviously, you guys are gun shy about doing something. You know, and, but, you know, I mean, when I was on the council, when I was younger, you know, there's one thing I found out, you can't make everybody happy. You're gonna piss somebody off, no matter what you do. Even if you don't do anything, you know, so, but anyway, you know, that was one of the reasons I wanted to get the road right, road done away with, was for that. And like I say, that house sat on there, you know? And I paid money to have that tore down, so. Yeah, I mean, I don't know. It was your house, though. Do I send you a bill?
That wasn't our house, it was just.
Well, sure it was. It was on your right of way.
Doesn't mean it was our house, though.
But, you know.
So you tore it up, so.
Yeah, I would send you a bill on that.
I tore it down, man. I tore it right down, you know, I did.
Well, I mean, I mean, really, I was, if you're gonna go with a variance route, the proper way to probably do that is you'd almost have to get variances for that road to be on those properties. And then if you had that kind of variance, that you knew that the road was gonna be allowed there, not gonna move, then you could probably start doing that. Then you start doing that, what you really should do is just move the right of way to where the road is now, and extend the prob, I mean, no matter what you do, it's a mess, that's why.
So if I, if I have other two lots there, then?
Well, that'd be, if you owned both sides of that road and stuff too, that would be a little bit different, because then basically you're petitioning to close that piece of road, and you're the landowner on both sides, yeah, that would be a lot different scenario, really. You could, you could basically close Washington south of that Tembik Road right there, that, that block, if you own, you know, because you own what, property on three of those four corners, don't you?
Oh, four? Well, three right now.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying. That one affected landowner is the issue, because that's someone that could want that road. If you acquired that property or owned it or whatever worked a deal out somehow, then you own the land on both sides, then you probably could just close that right of way. That'd actually probably be a cleaner way, then you'd own that entire property.
Is there, is there anybody else on that property?
I don't think so. I think it's just kind of a vacant lot, basically.
No, it's, yeah, it's vacant.
Just tree grown and, yeah, probably an old building or two.
Joe lives across the street from it, and he owns a lot next to it.
Right. But I mean, that's really the big holdup, if you were, if you were gonna talk about wanting to do it the right way, because then you could petition to close that and be the landowner on both sides.
Even be owned to land on both sides, then you wouldn't even have to close it if you didn't want to.
Well, no, what I'm just saying, that would be the proper way to go about it, because then you could basically just close that small piece off. There's nobody that would need to access through there in a lot of ways with that. I mean, you could argue that would be a better way to do it. The road's in the wrong spot anyway, all that stuff, so you could just basically, you know, but even that, I mean.
Well, look at the road right, right of way.
Too far deep in it without the state's attorney being here neither, but I'm just saying, that's kind of the the issue you're gonna have is you've got that one landowner there that might want that right of way maintained, and now you've got an issue where you're, where granted variance on it, so. Right.
You go, if it's a section line, you gotta still leave it to other people.
Well, it's not a section line. It's just a town platted right of way.
No, it's not a section line.
Right, it's a platted.
The section line is on the other end of it.
Just these down over there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, right there. And you see, they, they have the road coming in before it and swinging back out to it now. That was just to get access, I guess, to, to generate. But if you look at the Tembik Road, the one that runs in front of my house, look at the right of way on it. You see, it's way up there. Joe has his house just inside his lot, but the road runs right by his house, but the road right of way is, you know, way south. With all the trees and all that shit around there, you know?
I'd say another thing too is just for the sake of the fact we don't have the state's attorney here too, it's probably best to either just table this variance.
And just wait till the.
Wait for the snow to melt and then have the state's attorney here.
July, August, I said.
Well, I mean, I yeah, May, June, I don't know.
I could do that.
At least enough time for them to be able to drive up there, take some, you know, Josh will take some pictures, some measurements, give us something, and then refer to the state's attorney on, you know, the opinion on things like that, because we're dealing with several ones kind of like that. I think that'd be the best case, rather than get ourselves into something that can't turn back on to get reversed anyway, so. And somebody else has a different opinion, I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table it till we can get, till, till the weather straightens out, get better measurements on it.
Commissioner Holmes makes a motion to table the variance for Mike Deer Wester. Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second?
Yeah.
Second by Commissioner Mataro. Is there any more discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? I think we might just table it for a month now and see what the weather is. Josh can check in with me. Solve the state's terms on it. All right. Thanks, Mike.
All right.
Kasia.
All right. We have to send a model safe posted, do not hand out to the. Okay, I know you guys are running ahead of schedule, and I'll be quick. Emily's not here today, so. Okay, uh, this is just our quarterly update with some highlights and things that we've been working on um, this last quarter, so in the front page, we had a great four H two-point razor. Again, we had record-breaking attendance this year, so it was an awesome turnout. Uh, Emily and I did for the Bay at the, during, or in the Linton fourth grade class a couple weeks ago, um, as part of a grant, and they're also studying North Dakota history, hard to study, so it fit well into that, so that was kind of fun. She wrapped up livestock judging season. Um, she had several different meetings, crop production, planting, livestock, and obviously it was pesticide training season, so Dan got to be there. Um, I wrapped up on the move to Bedinawak junior in the school, so that's just nutrition class with second graders, and I did that in adult first elementary schools. And I did a four H communications program, Project Expo, pre-Unit. We had really good turnout for that. So hopefully we'll draw up some more participation in those four H contests and categories, so. Wrapped up another session of Real Colors at the school. We had Safe Night. That's always a big event. Um, some of you probably are only your own kids attended it, but that's for grades five through, um, we've been along eighth graders the last couple years because they got gypped during COVID, and get to go, but typically it's grades five through seven. And we rotate between Linton, Strathburg, and Hazelton, to the location. So this year it was in Linton. Had a variety of speakers or main. Um, speaker was Matt Wingevac with BCI, talking about online safety. And so that was kind of a good, good topic, a timely topic, and then there was vaping and sun safety. Cell phone addiction, opioids, and marijuana use, so. It was always a fun night for the kids. I did some sun safety as part of pesticide training and have the derma scan there, so people could do skin checks on their face. Um, wrapped up that purity impressions program we're working on. Um, yeah, just, it's been busy. These are, this is obviously not everything that we've been doing, but just some, just some highlights to give you some ideas. Do you guys have questions? On the back, we have things we've attended and upcoming date. We're gearing up now. It's getting ready to be the four H season, so. Right now, we're doing some fundraising stuff and getting those things out, but it's our, it doesn't look like it outside, but it'll be here before we know.
I'm Dave.
Yeah, um, I guess one question, if you guys don't have a question for me, as you know, I'm involved in Darian Aid Day, and so uh, in the past, we've asked if any of the commissioners want to drive the kiddie train. Um, not looking at you, Aaron, but you have, you have done it in the past.
I have the most experience, yeah.
So we use the county four-wheeler, and then the Linton Chamber of Commerce has the little train, I guess, to hook up, and it's like a two-armed gig, I think, about. And, uh, just drive the kids up and down the street. We always say, you know, it's a campaign opportunity if you wanna put your sign on it or whatever you wanna do, but um, if, if I have a volunteer or volunteers, we can split the shift.
Good, Erin.
Yeah, yeah, everybody's just, it looks like everybody's just.
I'm just asking who wants to drive the kiddie train this year.
Well, I for sure can drive it.
Okay, well, if anybody else wants to sign up, I'm sure Erin will share the shift with you.
Sure, I can find some volunteers at the Beer Garden, help me out if I get tired, so.
Oh, no.
No, it's fine. It's usually pretty entertaining, so.
The kids like a lot of it, so.
Yeah, I do love it, especially when firefighters are trying to shoot you with water, and then it's a game of who's getting closer, and so sometimes I get closer to the next end the firefighters do, and so. It's good.
So Darian Aid Day is June ninth, so mark your calendars for that. Hopefully it looks a little nicer outside.
Hopefully there's a blizzard warning.
Right, yeah. We always get a lot of different seasons that day, so.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions or comments or?
Just appreciate everything you do. You guys do amazing job, so.
Well, thank you.
We did reviews too with, um.
Yeah, Kevin.
Deena, the boss lady, she came down and, um, so that we, our, our girl, we do a very good job. They're, I mean, we're got a good group of extension folks that are. Yep, reviews went very good, they're on news.
And Ashley Kraus started, um, on February twenty-first was her first day. We're giving her a hard time because we live over there every week now. She started, but, uh, she's transitioning well, and her and Connie, um, still stay in contact, and Connie's willing to answer questions and stuff. The transition is going well, so.
Is she full-time or?
Yeah, she's full-time.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, so, all is well.
Okay, well, thanks.
Thanks, Kasia.
Is she from around here?
Yeah, he loves your project. Right, but I think it's.
I'm not sure. Um.
Yeah.
We could probably call Kenny and Rob. I suppose it's only ten minutes off. Time that to the conference call again here.
Smelt is the one that goes off Power Hills.
Hello? Hi, is this Rob? Yeah, it is. Hey, Rob, it's, uh, it's Commissioner Magrum here, the Evans County Commission.
Hello, sir.
Hey, we got you on speakerphone here. We're gonna let you call in, um, is that, is now, is now work? We're a little ahead of schedule, but.
Yeah, no, that would be fine. Uh, we should probably reach out to Kenny first.
Yeah, I'm, uh, I was just gonna warn you, I'm gonna try and do the conference call here, but it's, it's got a mess of buttons, so if I hang up on you, it's nothing personal.
Okay, I get it.
Okay, so I'm supposed to hit more? And select conference. But did it just hang up on you, Rob, or?
Hello?
Hi, Ken, it's Aaron Magrum with the Evans County Commission.
Okay, am I on?
Yeah, you're on speakerphone. I'm gonna try and bring Rob back in the conference here. If I hang up on you, it's an accident. I don't know how to run this phone best.
Oh, I'm good.
So, Ken, are you still on?
Yep.
Rob, are you on? Ha, first try. I'm on it, huh? Okay, so you, you guys are both on, uh, you guys are both on speaker. We're conference calling here. Commissioner Holmes, Commissioner Mataro, Commissioner Everly, and myself are here, along with the auditor and the state's attorney representative, so, uh, the floor is yours.
All right, um, just kinda bringing up a few of the things that we've been doing. Uh, we've reached out through letters to all of the, uh, property owners up, up on the hill. Um, we've got commitment from about seventeen right now. We're still gonna work on. We've got commitment from about 17 right now, we're still gonna work on some more to help us raise some funds to upgrade our road. One of the reasons we're calling or wanted to be on the agenda was when we built the road originally, the county was willing to help us by just collecting and folding the funds, so that we had one, one location for them to pay. A whole piece to agree to, and then when it was completed, and Marlis, I think, did that for us. So then we have one place, when the burden is done, then we can, that can be done with it, so. And that would be a huge, huge start. And Kenny, do you want to add anything?
Okay, so essentially, like, from what I remember, what I had talked to Marlis about was that the county had basically set up a fund, it was almost like we held the money in escrow. The contractors that you guys hired and vetted and decided you were gonna agree to do the work, did the work, but then submitted the bills, basically to us through you, kind of, and we basically just handled the money, so you didn't have one individual landowner responsible for anything, handling the money and paying the bills, that way everything's kind of fair, that's, that's kind of a Cliff Notes version of what was before?
Yeah, I would say that's great. We did, you know, then there was, nobody didn't come back with one of the landowners, you say, oh, where'd you go?
Yeah, no, and I, I think talking to Marlis before, that historically, the auditors, when we get audited, with Robert setting up that fund, it wasn't.
What they did is I just established a Beaver Bay Road Fund, and then my auditors never had a problem with it, we have a new auditor firm now.
Sure.
I don't.
Legally, we wouldn't have no trouble, okay? Legally, we wouldn't have no.
No, I think by the time they were done paying, I think Ross Bower filled out that road, there was like $3,000 left. And then I called, I think John Olmacher was involved in that, to see what he could do with that $3,000, he just went and purchased gravel and $3,000 out.
They basically just, he used all the funds, so the money was out, and then they closed the fund?
So, I think everybody paid it?
Well, they, John Olmacher went around and collected all the money.
He collected it, right? So, we don't do much, to give you the money, don't.
And then basically, all, all we'd be doing is we'd just be holding the funds to make sure that it's coming from one source, and you don't have a one neighbor accusing the other neighbor of whatever's going on. Right, so I think, I think if that's what's been done in the past, and it worked, I don't, I guess I see no issue with doing that again.
Are they gonna be collecting the funds then?
Right, so Rob, you, you, you guys are gonna have some kind of committee or something, you guys are gonna collect the funds and deposit them in the county?
Well, yeah, we could do it either way, I guess, we have them mail it direct. Whatever works, whatever it needs, we need you to. You know, we can tell you, and like, we just have to take communication with Marlis.
Right, well, I think the big issue is, I don't think we want the county requesting those funds, because that makes it look like we're asking for specials or demanding some kind of tax dollars, so I think, I think if they're willingly sending it, care of the Beaver Bay Road Fund, et cetera, et cetera, I think it's fine, but like, I don't, I don't think the county can like, like, send out a request letter or nothing, so you at least have to kind of settle that yourselves, but I mean, I think that's, I think this is the best way to go, I think you guys are gonna do it, I think you're doing it the right way, and and we're willing to help out in a way with handling the dispersments and stuff, I think that would be fine. So.
Yeah, I think we could just kind of, all the property owners that are running the, you know, Senate for Robert here, then we can get it in properly, and then so that maybe they are, for, I believe, and then, I'm sorry.
Sure, yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know if it's an issue to even have them drop it off for those or whatever, just as long as they know they're volunteers, they know it, and they know where it's going, so. As long as that information is shared out the right way with you guys, I don't think that would be an issue here, so.
We'll, we'll send them another follow-up letter, and ask them to submit some money to the county, and and make sure you get a copy ever, and that it's for the Beaver Bay Road, put it in their memo.
Yeah, and then, yeah, then I think Marlis will probably just give you guys confirmation all the time, you know, who's paid and the amounts and stuff too, so that way you guys know what's going on too, and then, I think that's kind of historically how it went before, and I think it went pretty good, so. Okay, so yeah, so basically, the county will just send up, set up a separate fund designated for that project, and as you guys pay to do it, and hire out for it, then we'll coordinate to make sure the funds get released properly, I guess.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks for calling in. Thank you.
Yep.
So, Marlis, does that make a lot of extra work for you?
Lot less work than, not fixing the road or not having.
I didn't know why they don't, why they don't just go to a bank and do that at a bank, or something.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, I know they did it before that one time, and that's probably why they want to do it again.
Well, I just didn't know legally if that's something.
My auditors never had a problem with it, and the state's attorney didn't have a problem with it either, so.
But yeah, I mean, since it's been done before, it's okay, and that's the nice part about having auditors and going through it, if it would have been a problem, they hope it would have been, so. Yeah. An issue arises, I guess we'll.
Yeah, and I just had our auditors just audit that when they did our two-year audit, I told them about it, and they just made sure everything was there, yeah, they were good.
Okay, well, Clarence isn't here yet, so we'll just move it down. Well, this Veterans Service Offer and Tax Director position, is that you?
We can, yeah, we can go through.
Let's just move to that right now.
Okay, two folders here. Yeah, if you don't want to mention any names, because you know the video's going with everybody, so just, I have all the applicants in the file, and you guys will have to decide what you want to do, Erin, as far as, you guys are the hiring, you know, you guys are appointed person, but.
Yeah, and I suppose we'll probably just have to set up an interview time, we could either, you know.
And are you gonna want to do just two commissioners, or, because if you do more, if you do three or more, it's an open meeting.
Right, well, historically, usually just pick the committee, so, I mean, I would say since it's appointed by the commissioners, it'd probably be a committee of two, and maybe a third person.
So, how many, you got two?
Two applicants for the tax director, and then there's four and five for the veterans service.
That many?
I thought that would have been the other way around.
Yeah, I thought, I didn't think you'd already have any kind of veterans.
So, there's nothing to really discuss, or just, you just want us to go over the?
You think we'll play the, the V A, too? Really?
You don't have to be a vet, right?
We're just going over the applicants, basically?
Yeah, and we should probably just.
Well, I think for the sake of time, we'll probably, we can just folder them up, and we can look at them at the end if you want, or something, because we've got, I'd like to get Sharon on here, since we do have some time, we can probably move you up that way, if you gotta get going with the weather, so. Yeah, just trying to expedite this meeting as fast as possible, so we don't have to burn the backseats of our vehicles to stay alive. Yeah, Sharon, if you want to come up, yeah, let's just, we'll move over it at the end of the meeting, or something, when we're doing bills, if you want to go through them, because that's really nothing to discuss or anything, we're just going over the applicants, so. They're available in the auditor's office, if you want, or at the end of the tour, so. Ken, you can start whenever you're ready.
Thank you, commissioners, for letting me come before you, I guess, my name's Sharon Schermeyer, I'm a resident of Evans County. My interest in the PERS retirement plan, I have a few reasons why I'm interested in it, probably most importantly, I worked at PERS for my career, so I was there over 30 years, and I retired about four years ago, so I'm also interested as a retiree. But what I'm hoping to do, I've been involved in, with the legislature this year, because there are several bills dealing with the PERS retirement plan, so I've testified up there. I feel it's important that the people who are making the decisions, whether it be the state legislature, or you, the county commission, have a good understanding of what's going on, and if I can help in any way to do that, that's kind of what my objective is. So I have learned that Burley County, who also is a member of the PERS plan, had adopted a resolution, and in addition to Burley County, there's 10 other counties who have done that, and they've taken a position on two of the bills that are up there, favorable for the senate bill, and in opposition to the house bill. And so I'm not sure how familiar the commission is, so I'm not sure what all you want me to go over, but I'm prepared. I mean, I can give you a summary of what each of the bills are doing, we can go through the resolution.
I think if you just want to go through a summary, I think just so people know the difference, that's probably a big thing to go through.
Okay, and then I also am not sure of the level, or how familiar everyone is with the plans, but so I might just give a little briefing, because what the county currently has through PERS is what's called a defined benefit plan, or a pension. So employees, there are contributions that the employee makes and the employer makes, and then at the end of a person's career, they get a pension for the rest of their life. So they aren't subject to the market fluctuations and that type of thing. And that's called the DB plan, so when I go through this, that's how I'll refer to it. The other type of plan is what's called the defined contribution plan, and you may be familiar with that, it's more like a 401K, where the, again, contributions are made by both the employee and the employer, but the employee is responsible for the investment of that money, and subject to any, you know, stock market risks and that type of thing. And at the time they retire, basically their retirement is based on however much money they've accumulated in that fund, how well they've done, and that's what they have for their benefit. So those are kind of the primary differences. So what's going on in the legislature is, it was actually last legislative session, at the end of the session, the legislature tried to close the defined benefit plan, but that didn't go, so what they ended up doing is passing a study resolution for the interim, for a committee to meet, to look at how they can close the retirement plan. The reason they want to close the retirement plan is because it has a large debt to it right now, and it's big. Right now, it's like 1.8 billion is what the debt is. And the reason that it's got into that position is because the correct amount, I mean, the proper contributions haven't been paid into the plan, so it's similar to having a mortgage, you know, if you don't pay enough, you know, the debt just keeps building. And so, historically, you know, we've been going before the legislature, or the PERS board had gone before, asking for more money from the legislature, they had a plan that we started back in 2011 for, for contribution increases, and six legislative bodies have refused to put in those contribution increases, so as a result of that, the debt has gotten bigger, so that's where the problem arises. But that's why the legislature is looking at it, because they want to say, how do we get out from under this debt? So they did study it in the interim, they came forward with a bill, which is House Bill 1040, and that was submitted by Representative LaFour, who's the house majority leader, and he was part of that study. And so what that plan does, is it's gonna close the defined benefit plan to all new employees starting January 1st to 2025. So, anyone who's in the plan now, up until January 1st, 2025, will stay in the plan, but any new people that you hire would go into a different plan, so what it does is creates a new defined contribution plan, or a 401K-type plan, and that's where all the new employees would go into. It increases the contribution and puts in a bunch of cash to try to pay off the debt over a 20, 20-year period, so it's a significant amount of cash that they're putting in, they're, they're doing it in a combination of like a one-time cash infusion of 240 million, they've got money coming from a legacy earnings fund of 70 million for the next 10 biennium, or nine bienniums, so that's like 630 million, and then they're raising the contribution rate to the employers. So that's kind of what they've got going there. So then, not everyone likes the idea of having the retirement plan closed, so the senate came up with a bill, Senate Bill 2239, that keeps the plan open for all the employees, but it also recognizes that maybe employees do want to be in a 401K-type plan, or a DC plan, so it creates, it gives them the option, so any new hired employee would have the option of which plan they want to join, whether the defined benefit or the defined contribution. And then it increases the employee contribution by 1%, and increases the employer contribution, which all employers would pay by about 3.8%, and it looks to pay off that debt over 30 years, is what they're looking to do. And it also includes a one-time transfer from the general fund of 250 million, so. So that's kind of what's been going on, what happened is, House Bill 1040 did pass the house, 77 to 16, just like from our district, District 8, the two representatives in our district voted for that plan, so they voted to close the plan, so that's kind of what's happened there. Senate Bill 2239 passed the senate, 3413. Our senator from our district voted for this bill, so even within our district, we've got our people supporting different bills, but now they've each crossed over into the other chamber, they've had hearings. Senate Bill 1040 is on, scheduled to be voted on on the floor, that was supposed to be voted on yesterday, but they didn't get to it, and it's on the calendar today, but I don't know if they'll get to it. But anyway, that's kind of where that one is, Senate Bill 2239 has been heard in the house, but they're hanging on to it in committee. What you kind of hear is it is, it's a big decision for the state, because it involves a lot of money, it involves a lot of people, there's over 50,000 people active and retired currently in the retirement plan. There's a lot of counties, cities, and school districts, I mean, almost 400 throughout the state that participate in the plan, in addition to the state agencies. So it's a big policy decision that they're considering, and they don't have, I, I don't know where it's gonna end up. And so I guess why I think it's important here is that if you feel that the defined benefit plan is important to the county, that you think it's a good recruitment tool, it's something you want to still have available for your employees, I just think it might be helpful to adopt a resolution stating such, which you can then provide to our district representatives, to the committees that are considering these bills, just to let them know how you feel, because clearly, I mean, there's a lot of dissension, and some of the people, I mean, that I've talked to said that this is probably one of the top three issues that they're gonna be deciding, it probably won't be decided till the end of the session, I mean, it's it's as big a decision as the tax relief that they're considering, so it's a very important decision, I feel that impacts a lot of people. So with that, the resolution was a copy, it's what Burley County had put together, so that's where it came from, I didn't come up with this, it was just, we asked Pam Binder up at Burley County to send us a copy, and she did, and so that's what's in here. And so basically, I mean, the resolution, it's, it's got a, a lot of different sections, but it's basically spelling out what's in the bill, and I, I think the reason they did that is because, as you know, with bills, they can get amended and changed in a lot of different ways, so this resolution basically lays out what's in Senate Bill 2239 as it currently stands, and it just goes on record to say what you're in support of. But that's kind of my general spiel, but if you want me to go, I mean, if you have any specific questions on any of the statements in the resolution, I mean, I can go into that as well, but with that, I'd just be open for any questions you might have.
Well, I got an email from the Association of Counties kind of going over some of this stuff, and the one thing that they, they showed a legislative public employee housing system info, and it says that if House Bill 1040 passed, which is the 401K version of defined contribution, that the PERS board's actuaries' current projection is that 1040 will cost the state. in political subdivisions an additional 4.5 billion over the next 23 years. But the Senate bill's version, which is basically to keep it the same, will cost the state 931 million over the next 30 years. Well, that-
Correct.
Doesn't even sense.
Not at all.
I, you know, what I mean by that is like, it doesn't seem like that'd be much of a decision when you're talking about a $3 billion difference.
I would agree.
Right, I mean, what I'm saying is that, because the other thing is, I mean, I, I called Senator Meagan last night.
Yeah.
And, um, I just said, well, because a lot of the things, you don't hear a lot of the testimonies. You go on the internet or you go up there. I said, what's the big preach? Or what's the big deal going on? And he said, the big issue is that they're still going to have to fund this current defined benefits or pension plan. They, they figure for roughly about eight years, because that's kind of the lifespan of, let's say, a 20-year-old county employee that started today couldn't live to be 100, you know? And he said, the trouble with it is, is that the bill doesn't go away because they're still going to have to fund it even while they're doing the defined contributions. And if you stop having people join the pension plan, you're not going to have younger folks paying in to help. You know, the whole point of the pension is the younger folks are kind of taking care of the older folks, which it's like social security and everything else. And so-
Kind of.
Well, I mean, the philosophy of it is that you're going to, you're going to have less money come into it while you're still having defined benefits that you have to pay.
Correct.
And that is the issue to which why the Senate passed the defined benefits too, is that they, one, they wanted it to go to the other House too, to have them take a look at it. But two, they were basically told that you're basically going to be funding two programs then. Which, I think if I remember right though, the Senate bill is almost kind of in that way too, because you can, can you opt into a 401K plan? Or is that the House bill then?
Nope, the Senate bill allows that.
Right, so there, the other thing about the Senate bill is that it still does allow you to opt into a defined contributions, which the claim for the defined contributions is that the younger generation wants 401K-style retirement because they tend to not stay at a job as long. So they want to roll over those benefits. Where with PERS, unless you go to another PERS-type entity, you, you're, you're, well, you don't lose it all probably, but you're right, you lose portions of it or big portions, where a 401K you can roll over. So, you know, that's kind of what I was described as as the reason for bringing it up too, is that they're, they're finding that the younger generation maybe isn't as attracted to the pension. But I just know in my own experience when I got out of college, and I was telling Sharon about this, was that I interviewed with several different places when I got out of college. They were all private firms, and then one was the DOT. The DOT have a lower hourly wage, which you could, your wage, but you couldn't beat the benefits in their retirement. And then, so I had certain guys in my age group that were maybe already married or engaged or had kids. That was a much more attractive job style than where I was a young bachelor, didn't know where I wanted to live. And so, so I can see those points where you, there's different type people you're going to attract with those type jobs. But I think, in my mind, just from hearing what I hear is that you're going to have to fund that pension plan no matter what. So it almost seems like you probably should just continue with it in that sense, rather than trying to reinvent the wheel. Because the, the other thing I did hear was, or a big speak on this was that there's quite a few states that have gone away from the pension plan. But now, a couple of them are actually going back now. Like, so the-
Alaska.
The idea of, oh, everybody's changing. It's like Alaska. I think there might even have been one or two other states that already considered going back now. So it didn't work out the way they thought either. So now the risk of going, well, you're going to go and fund these things and change all this stuff. And then in 20 years, you're going to spend $2 billion switching it all back again.
That's a very valid point because, and, and you're exactly right. I mean, you can close the plan, but you still got to pay the debt.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and, and, but then you're also paying contributions into your other plan. Some interesting thing, um, and this is information or experience that we had at PERS too, because that was the big argument in a lot of the testimony that was for the DC plan, is like they said, well, the new employees, the younger employees want this. Well, there was some testimony from a mechanic from the city of Ground Forks, who was in his twenties, who, he came and testified on the bills and just said, well, I'm part of that young generation. And no, I only came to work for the city because of the benefits. I mean, like you were saying, he was very interested in getting onto the defined benefit pension plan. Um, with PERS, you know, we, we currently do have a defined contribution plan for a certain, they approved it back in the year 2000 for non-clot, certain, a subset of employees. Well, the experience there is that, you know, initially, you know, a bunch of people went in. Well, then the market crashed a couple times. They were successful in getting legislation passed to allow them to come back into the defined benefit plan, which like 85% of them came back into the defined benefit plan. The legislature also opened up the defined contribution plan to all new state employees. During that, for like a four-year period, um, 2% of the new hires went into it. So it, so when you say younger employees want it, I mean, our experience historically shows not so much.
Right.
Um, that, and, and you're absolutely right. You know, part of the deal too is that when you come to work for government, generally your wages aren't as competitive as the private sector. So you look at the whole compensation package, which includes the benefits, so.
Anybody else have any questions to share?
So how much did you say that, that, that they owe? I mean, that would cost? How much are they behind?
Uh, right, well, right now, so-
I think it was 1.9 billion.
1.8.
Right, was there, was like the current-
Just 1.8 billion.
Just, just 1.8?
I mean, is what they're behind. Um, they've got assets of, uh, this was as of their last audit report. So they have assets of 3.7 billion is what they're holding. The liabilities are 5.5 billion, which leaves a shortfall of 1.8 billion. But the thing with that, that you have to remember, I mean, it's not due today, you know? It's, it's like a mortgage that you can pay off over time. But the problem is, is that the state, they have not been paying in the correct contribution rate.
Why, why not?
Um, my understanding is, is that they wanted to not put another nickel into the plan so they could close it, not understanding that, yeah, you starve it, but that doesn't make your debt go away. It actually makes your debt worse. And, and in contrast to that, you know, the state also has a teacher's retirement plan, which is separate. All the teachers are in their own pension. They had the same problem as the PERS plan. Back in 2008, when the markets crashed, um, we, we lost like 25% of the value of the assets, which was huge, because the plans were, our plan was fully funded before then. So the market crashed, went to the legislature and came up with a plan. And both of us went in with the same plan to increase the contributions by 8% over a four-year period. Um, the employees pay 4%, the employer pays 4%. The, the state legislature passed it in its entirety for the teachers. And as a result of that, they implemented that. And they're on track to be fully funded by 2044. So you can see that if you would have properly funded it, you wouldn't have a problem. You'd have-
So if they would have, they would have kept their funds up the way they would have been, they would, they would never be in this situation?
Right, so essentially, they just let everyone kind of, yeah, they just haven't put in the correct contribution. And, I mean, it, it was, it's frustrating. And this is, I guess, what my concern is as a retiree, because the leg- you go to the hearings and the people proposing to close the plan said, we know we have a contract with everyone in this plan. We're obligated to pay everyone's pension till they die. But, but they, they're going to have to appropriate money every two years. Well, if you look historically over the last 12 years, they weren't even willing to give that last 1% contribution increase, which is a way smaller amount of money than they're looking at now. And it was six different legislative bodies. They could not get it passed, even though the governor supported it. Um, there, this, you know, in some of those bienniums, the state had money. Uh, the counties, you know, this, you know, all of our political subs supported it. But the legislature had a different thought. Well, how, you know, this is all long-term stuff. I mean, House Bill 1040 is looking for cash to come in over the next 20 years, like from a legacy fund. While the state, if oil collapses and egg collapses, I mean, they may have a hard time just paying out state budget. And then they'll say, well, why do we want to put money in this retirement plan? Because it's not going to go broke for 40 years down the road. But then it just makes it more expensive again because you're not paying on your debt.
Right.
So.
Yeah, well, um, I guess there's two things. I guess if you guys feel comfortable passing a resolution or the other thing to do, I guess, is if you don't want to pass the resolution, which you want to just contact your legislators, I guess, too, is another option is something that we've been educated on it. I guess it's, do you guys know you want to proceed, I guess?
Well, if we pass the resolution, I mean, what, would that really help? I mean, would it really help?
Well, I think the idea of the resolution is it just basically sends a-
Tells a message.
I mean, if we agree that, you know, the resolution is to support the Senate bill, which is basically for the defined benefits or keep it basically how it is. If that's what you think is probably the proper course of action or at least the least resistant or whatever, if we pass a resolution and it gets sent forward like these other county ones does it, it's going to get to your legislators and, and other members of the legislature and-
It's the way I would signal to.
Right, that's, I mean, that's really what a resolution is. So I mean, you're just voting that we all basically agree, or at least the majority of us agree on the situation.
Doesn't mean they're going to do that, but-
No, it doesn't mean anything they can do, but yeah.
It's just one individual call. It's like, are you going to call? Or, or you throw in a resolution? Then it's more chance to get it down.
Absolutely. So I mean, that's where, you know, if you guys want to make the motion.
I'm making a motion, though.
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
Right.
Yeah.
Second by Commissioner Matieri. Is there any more discussion on the resolution at all? Not hearing any. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Resolution passed.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thanks, Sharon. Clarence?
Hey.
You're up.
It's not time yet.
Yeah, it is. You're a minute late.
No, I'm not.
It says 10 o'clock.
It doesn't say 10 o'clock.
No, the agenda says 10. It says 10 to 12.
Even though broken clock's right place today.
It's not 10 to 12.
I made you think about it, didn't I?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Where's yours, sir?
Is this? Um, when was the last time I was here? October?
I think so.
It's in kind of October?
Oh, it's in there, yeah.
How many of the commissioners have gone to Emmett County Historical Society meeting since then? Anybody? No? You know how many meetings they've had since then?
No.
You know how many people visit the Emmett County Historical Society over the last year?
No.
Do you know anything about the Emmett County Historical Society?
Well, I've seen people there.
Yeah.
Five, 100? I don't know how many, but I have seen people there.
After I came here the last time, um, I understand that they dropped off the bylaws in some meeting minutes.
Mm-hmm.
So I went through the bylaws. And from my memory and from proof of the bylaws that they did give you, these are incomplete. There's a section that's missing. I don't know how. It looks like it's a complete set. But there's, the, the portion of the bylaws that are missing define how many board members there are going to be, elections from the board members, et cetera. The one thing that I took away most from these bylaws is that the first page, it says, regular meetings of the society shall be held in January, March, July, and October. And then it was revised as March was moved to April. So to my knowledge, there was no meeting held in January. And I don't know about anything other than that. You have minutes that were submitted last year from September. I did a meeting minutes, a minutes request for the meeting that I attended in July. I never got those. I submitted that to the state's attorney for review for the meeting violation and for the, what, what I talked about the last time I was here. They never got back to me. And the reason why they never got back to me is because the Emmett County Historical Society never responded to them. They just ignored it and it went away, which is kind of pretty much what happens. We ignore things long enough, they just go away. Like me, this is the last time I'm coming here. Whatever you guys do after this is on you. I don't care anymore. I'm fighting leukemia. I'm fighting really bad asthma. I'm on more medication than I care to be on. And, uh, my mom told me when I was a kid that the only thing it takes for evil to survive is for good men to do nothing. And my mom told me when I was a kid that the only thing it takes for evil to survive is for good men to do nothing. And I felt, I felt compelled to say what was going on there because it's a really good organization that does a lot of really good, that does a lot of good, that's being ran really poorly. They, they don't have the proper number of board members. They don't hold the meetings when they're supposed to. They don't hold the meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Orders, which is also a direct violation of their bylaws. There are a few things in the bylaws that they follow. And this isn't Sawgrass. I don't care. I didn't have nothing to do with them for four or five years after I resigned as the, as a second, as the treasurer. I didn't have anything to do with them for years. But I went to a meeting because I wanted to get involved. I have a PhD in history. I thought it would be nice if I get involved with Emmett County's history. And then I might have something to contribute to our community's history. So, I went to a meeting and it was a crap show. They had co-presidents, which isn't allowed. There was one board member there. No, there were zero board members there. There's like a total of five people. They don't do any recruiting. They don't have any, any local members. Uh, this one says co-presidents, the one in the meeting minutes. There's no people, it says that the minutes were read and approved. Who were they read by? Who were they approved by? Who firsted, who seconded? Like, you guys all have to operate like that. And so do they, because they get county funds. Now, this last meeting in September, one, two, three, four, five, seven people. Jeffy, were there? There were seven people in attendance. They have about a hundred members. They're supposed to have a board meeting before the meeting of the board members. From what I can tell from this list, there were no board members present at this meeting. Jeff was a former board member, but now he's vice president, or at least he was according to these minutes. It's just, it's just a crap show. Nobody's doing anything they're supposed to do. And I'm, I'm tired of fighting to try to get somebody to pay attention. Anything to have with it, to it, for it, about it, after today is on you. That's not on me.
Corey, I think when you came in in October, you were waiting for an attorney general's opinion on, was it meeting?
I had given up waiting. I mean.
So, you still, you never did receive the attorney general's opinion on?
No, because the Emmett County Historical Society never responded to their request.
You're talking the state attorney general?
Well.
Or the, or the state's attorney?
No, the attorney general of the state, yeah. Their office handles those investigations.
Right, that's where, because I think that's where we were at last time, was that we were kind of waiting for their opinion on, because you had made a request on meeting minutes, posting of meetings.
Yeah, nothing's changed.
Right, but you, so you never did receive that opinion from the attorney general?
Their next meeting is, is according to the bylaws, supposed to happen the third Thursday of April.
Who's the president now?
They are co-presidents. Yeah, that's exactly what I said.
Well, because Marla, you have those, you have those minutes.
Jackie Wald is the, is the president and then. No, she's Ben Wald's wife.
Ben Wald.
Beverly Heitz and Jackie Wald. Jeff's the vice president.
But the auditor.
Whoever is the secretary treasurer.
The auditor's office has those minutes and the, uh.
Well, they're right here.
Right. I mean, those, that was got, that was submitted sort of too, so we do have that. If you guys wanna look at that too, in Marsha's offices. She does have that.
How much funds does the county get for that? How much funds does the county get for that?
And this is, you know, the meeting that I attended in July, they were getting ready to, they voted with the five people that were there to move the old schoolhouse from Strasburg to the, to Linton, to the Emmett County Historical Society's lot. They talked about it for about fifteen minutes and then they voted on it. And I believe that that's still a go. I don't know. We'd have to ask somebody from there. But, I mean, that kind of investment in moving a building, they can't really take care of the buildings that they have financially. Now they're gonna bring another one. It just seems like they're out of, they're just out of control. You know, they're not doing anything, as far as I can tell from the brief things that I've had to deal with them, they're not doing anything the way they're supposed to. Which in and of itself isn't a bad thing, because there's plenty of organizations like that. In small towns, you don't, you know, bylaws call for them, the president to appoint a head of this and a head of that and committees and all that. And so, when you got five people at a meeting, it's hard to appoint, you know, okay, you're the, you're the head of this, you're this committee, you're this committee, you're this committee. You know, I understand that those things get difficult, but you still have to follow the rules. Otherwise, why even be in the game? You know, it could be a great little historical society, unique in this area, but. It's just not, it's just not being run that hard. Anyway, it's all I got here.
Anybody have any questions for Clarence?
They have a meeting Thursday this month. It'd be nice if one of you went.
What time they got it?
No idea, Gary.
And what do they have at?
You know, I was, I'm supposed to, as a life member, I was, well, at the July, at the July meeting, Jackie Wald told me that I was banned from attending meetings and that I was thrown out of the historical society, neither of which could happen. It's not in the bylaws. It just, it just can't happen. For one, I didn't violate any known rule or order or anything. I waited till after the meeting was adjourned to address her and my concerns, and she just went over the top. I mean, she's, she was telling me that I didn't have any right to be there, that, you know, just all of this crazy stuff. And so, I haven't gotten a newsletter since then. As a life member, I got a newsletter every quarter of the year, and I haven't gotten one. So, I don't know what's going on. You know, I don't know if that, if her mother's passing had an effect on whether the newsletter was published or not. I can't tell you.
Yeah, who knows?
But I know I didn't get one in January. I know there wasn't a meeting in January. I know that there's been no response to my requests for the minutes of the meetings. Because I wanna know who voted. I wanna know who, who brought it up, who approved it, you know? From, from what I gathered from the July meeting, um, the lady that owns the schoolhouse down in Strasburg, she used to have that German house.
Oh, yeah, Mrs. Tim Gabriel. Judy?
Yeah, Gabriel, I think is her last name. She just, she just went to Mrs. Wald, to Jackie Wald. She just went to her and had a private conversation about moving the schoolhouse. And then Jack said, "Yeah, it's a great idea. Let's make it happen." I mean, that's obviously not the way that you conduct business for an organization, especially with something as big as that. I mean, you're talking about, you know.
Is that the little building by the old German house to the south?
Yeah, that little red schoolhouse. Yeah, they wanna move that.
How's he know his old office?
They wanna move that up here and put it on a poor concrete slab and, and I, I don't think it's a bad idea. I just think that you, when you do something like that, you have to make a proper. You know. You guys know more, better than anybody. If you don't do it by the letter of the law, then you got people from every side breathing down your neck. I mean, it's not. Anyway, I'm sorry for interrupting you. Did you have a question?
Uh, no.
All right.
Thanks for coming in, Clarence.
Is it true your daddy eats puppies?
Yeah, no, he's a horrible person. Just ask anybody that hates him, right? Facebook is an answer.
I heard, I heard that he eats puppies for snacks.
Well, when you vote against things people don't like, they make up things about you on the internet, so. Thanks, Clarence.
Thank you, guys. Have a good day.
Yeah.
Never heard that one before.
No, that's, play on your Twitter.
Aaron, I asked Sam to come in earlier. He was very hip.
Okay.
I like that a lot. Comment on what he said.
Okay, well, Jeffy, because you're next on the list anyway, so why don't you just hang up and then we can do your quarterly update right away, too. They wouldn't believe the stuff they got put up. Like, when he votes against the bill or something, other people come out and be like, "Oh, you're starting children?" And you're like, "What the?"
We're just in force not having a meeting in January because Jackie Wald's mother-in-law died and they were dealing with the funeral.
You mean her mom?
Mother died.
Her mom.
Yeah, mom died.
Yeah, her mother-in-law.
No, her mom.
Remind her of her mom.
And she was dealing with the funeral, so we decided not to have the meeting. That was the reason for there not being a meeting. So, we had been already having meetings all time. And we, we have rewritten our bylaws. And you guys did get a copy of that, of the new bylaws. So, uh, and as far as we can find, Clarence never paid his dues. There's no record of him paying dues for the historical society. It's not in our records, which would have been paid when he was running, when he was the secretary treasurer of the historical society. But it's not written in the books, so, as far as we can tell, he's not a member. Would show me any difference to anything. And we do have a board. We have president and vice chair. We have co-vice presidents, president, co. And we have all of the, you know, board members that we should have. We don't have a lot of people that come to the meetings because we don't just own. There's not a lot of them. They're never interested in coming, which we did have one, but we don't. As far as the schoolhouse goes, the family that owns that schoolhouse came to us and it was brought up at a meeting. And they wanted to donate the school to the historical society. If we kept it as a schoolhouse, they would donate it to us. And then we could, if we moved it up, and we could move it up there. And we, uh, we could, we looked into it and we could afford to do it. And, uh, because we do have money. And so, we are planning on doing it.
You'd set it right by the museum, here, right?
Yeah, we've got a lot. We own that lot to the north of the museum. We own that lot to the north of the museum. And our plans are, as soon as we get this, get a cement slab, like you said, for it in the spring or whenever, we can get one for it, is to move it up there. And it'll remain a schoolhouse like it originally was, a country schoolhouse.
It's a real building, it's small.
Yeah. I actually haven't looked at the building, but.
So, Wednesday, Wednesday, he said they're supposed to be a meeting this month, the third Thursday?
Yeah, we're still gonna have one. I think they will, yeah.
What time?
Usually we've been having our meetings at the, at the, uh, uh, grill.
The where?
At the grill.
The restaurant? At what type?
Um, generally, I think we have them around noon, noon to two o'clock. I'm not sure exactly what Jackie will schedule it.
One thirty on the seven.
Uh?
One thirty on the seven. No, one fourteen.
On the seven?
One thirty on the fourteen.
Okay, one thirty on the fourteen. There you go.
She will know.
One thirty on the fourteen.
Explains why I haven't been on.
One thirty is a tough time.
Yeah.
Walk, come on, hey, it's in your son.
Thirty in the afternoon's had a tough time for me, so, okay, well, that's fine. Matt, Jeff, would you do a quarterly update for us and veterans? Is it looking like Christmas out there yet?
What's not?
Doesn't look too different.
Looks to you then.
Light, light.
Hey, uh, you know, first quarter of the month, usually a lot of people, no one at town that come in. And on the bottom, they're having a spring conference over in Fargo, starting today, uh, due the sixth. And I'm not gonna be attending it. They did it off for a virtual week. And I don't stay in hotels very well. I can't sleep in beds. So, I told them I wouldn't be attending it.
I think this weekend part was gonna be a tough week, so.
Yeah, well, but, uh, we're only, I did write down here, we're only required to attend one a year.
How many do they have?
You know, we're required to have so many.
Great, I think I watch three or four a year.
They have two a year, two a year, yeah. They have two of the year.
You attended the fall one, right? You attended the one in October, I think, or something, right?
Yeah, I attended, yeah. I've always attended both of them. I've never missed any. But, uh, so, uh, you know, if we get a new veteran service officer hired and they attend the one in October, that would be, uh, another their training for the year, uh, that they're required to get to. And then any new veteran service officer, that'd be other train, they'd have to do online or, you know, they probably have to go to Fargo for it. But, uh, I don't know if it's far away yet.
Any questions for Jeff at all, if you wanna say anything?
I don't.
Nope. Okay. Well, I think that's good for now, Jeff.
Okay.
All right, yeah, thanks. Sam, you're up. How are you, is she?
Nope.
Her little head's.
All right, unlying for today. Like always every year, Charlotte, right, say, still sustain, but yet. I went only down there once this winter. Snowed higher than July.
Yeah, that's pretty awful down there, yeah.
Did you get it shoveled away?
No.
Yeah, did you get it cleaned out? Get it washed up there? Geez.
Did you break it open? Yeah.
Toilet paper's gonna be all soggy.
Turn it on.
Got stuck, shoveled out and left, no?
I was wondering, you're monitoring the waters?
Yeah.
I don't know what's going on with you or you, you both, or what, we're able to hear anything?
No, I, you know, we, you know, we had that meeting with the Corps and they were gonna talk to the game and fish, and I haven't heard a word about the, about Langlers. I haven't had a word about nothing. I don't say, I don't know. The only, the only thing that I would say, you know, without reaching out to them again, I haven't talked to KJ either, because I knew he was a part of that meeting, but, uh, it sounds like with the, some of the moisture changes and stuff, they thought the river was gonna come up, but then the long-term forecast was that Sakakui is down so far that it's only gonna be a temporary rise, and then long-term, they're gonna fill Sakakui up and probably strangle the river. So, I don't know if they're waiting for some projections before they make decisions or what, but I haven't heard a word since we had our little, you know.
I haven't, I talked to Pat, and then he said that he's gonna talk to, I've never heard.
I'll just give you guys an update. I don't remember that, but, uh, so, Pat Fioc from, he's on Pier, right? I was gonna think Mowbridge. His Mowbridge, okay. So, him and, um.
What?
KJ Wilson.
Well, KJ was there, Sam, and what we did was we just met up about Langlers, about what their plans were, forecasts, how to get on the list for, you know, low-water crozier, low-water dock and all that stuff. And they were gonna start putting the plan together that we would have to submit for the permit and they said they were gonna reach out to us to get us information. And I, you know, I'm sure the weather had maybe something to do with it, but at the same time, I.
He said he talked to Bud and stuff, and I never heard that from him.
Yeah, so I don't know.
KJ called me and he said.
So, they haven't talked to KJ either, though?
Some about the birds and stuff and that, all that shit.
Yeah, because KJ, I mean, because KJ's usually in the loop with them guys too, so usually he has information for either. So, if he's not here, nothing, then yeah, there's not much go off of, so. No, I haven't heard anything about Langlers and as far as what's that's gonna be like, but.
They're affecting my, I don't see what.
Well, I mean, if anything, even if there's a Langlers, I would say we're still gonna have Rice, and if anything, Rice is gonna come up, probably, so. Right.
We just haven't kept there.
Sure, right. But I, I mean, Rice Lake especially too, because that thing, I mean, that'll be pretty popular, especially if the river's terrible. Rice Lake will be popular, so, yeah.
Did Magron come down and pump out that sewer down in, in Rice Lake then?
I don't know. I never looked in there, you know, since.
Is that something we wanna do?
Well, I don't know.
I tell you, you know, it's a lot of it, you know, it's sort of stink like.
I'll be down there this spring. We got a few jobs down there. We can probably meet up and take a look at that boat, see if something, if something's gotta be done, yeah, we can take care of it, if somebody.
I don't know how much you've got to use quite a bit.
Yeah, well, like I said, I, I'll be down there working. We got a few projects down on that south side of the lake, so.
The other thing, Marla, that Strasburg Wildlife, ever, are they gonna help pay for that?
I sent a request, so, I'm sure they will.
They helped out last year, right?
He was a thousand dollars.
Yeah, so. But, yeah, I'd say everything's on like it usually is, so.
Okay.
I haven't got, no complaints, so keep up the good work, Sam.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
One other thing. Can I get my road open sometime? I tend to get it open with the tractor.
Okay, that would be, that's the one we talked about, seventy-sixth, right?
Yeah. The tractor, you know, I opened it by my time already.
Yeah.
They go by on the highway, but they don't take longer on either.
Yeah. Well, after this last one, it'll probably take a little bit, but, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Skylar's right there, so we'll mention it to him.
He was in the yard, my yard, my son was there.
Oh, well.
You know where it's at?
Yo.
I know you got a lot of scum, you know, when you go by on the highway.
Yeah, well, I mean, I'm sure, hopefully, this is the last storm, and then we'll have all of them opening.
Won't say no.
Well, I've been saying that for a month already. It's not looking good, so.
Good.
Okay.
Next to the prayer.
Yeah, there you go. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sam.
Uh, can I make a correction?
Sure.
Uh, I'll just conform down there. I'm, I'm sorry, but, uh, our bylaws, you haven't gotten a copy of them yet because they haven't been approved yet by our society. We have to approve them at our next meeting in April.
So, we have the old bylaws.
You've got the old ones.
Okay.
The new ones that we've, that we've written haven't been approved by us.
So, who wrote up the new ones?
So, we have to, you'll have the new ones after our April meeting when we approve them. And then we'll get them to you.
Who made up the new ones? Who makes up, who makes up the new ones?
We had a committee rewrite them. And now they have to be approved by us, by everybody that comes to the meeting. And then, once they're approved, we'll get a copy to you.
Okay.
Okay. So, you've got, what you've got now are the old bylaws.
All right.
But we will get you a new copy once they're approved.
Okay.
Okay?
Thanks, Jeff.
All right.
I think it makes sense to be bylaws.
Aaron, what? Yeah, well, we can go over these couple of building permit quick, things quick at the bottom, so. Well, generally with bylaws, usually, well, in theory, what you do is you form some kind of a committee of the members draft rough bylaws, and then you go through it as a bigger group, whether it's your membership or a board or something like that, and then from there, then you approve it. So, it's usually a couple of different steps. So, I mean, if they have a hundred members, then in theory, they should have a meeting with roughly twenty to seventy people, and then they would go through the bylaws. But most likely, they're probably not gonna be there anymore.
Well, that's what I was wondering, how they did that, you know, they did that.
Did they tell them that they were ready for her?
That was done legally or right, huh? But, whatever.
What's the encroaching of publishing notice?
Did you guys review it? Is it okay to go and you want to discuss it or?
I thought, I thought it looked so good. That's Sam's last year.
I just wanted to make sure.
Well, it was just kind of an overview of what we all. Well, it was just kind of an overview of what we already put in, right, there's nothing changed, nothing different.
Unless you guys want to change it, I just wanted to make sure.
Uh, did you guys see anything? Let's see, just go with.
Okay, I'll listen.
Okay, I moved off the list.
So when they go in those encroachments, when they see, one farmer sees up to that middle sex line, the other farmer sees up to middle sex line, that's an encroachment, right?
Yeah.
Is there some of that going on down there?
I think it goes on all over the place, really, so, but.
Every county you go into, you see, no matter where you go.
Yeah, so, well, we'll hold on to that for now. Nita!
Yes, I'm.
Floor is yours.
Bringing in Wayne Ely, he's my replacement, I, you know Gary Horn.
Yo, hey Gary.
Dan Metteri, so it's strawberry. Aaron.
Hey Wayne.
Yep.
And Don Everly.
Hi, Don.
Nice to meet you.
Welcome aboard.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
So when did you start?
Yesterday.
Okay.
Real fresh.
What's, what's the name, what's the name again?
Uh, Wayne Ely.
Oh, okay.
So I just wanted to bring him in and introduce you guys to him, and he's doing a good job.
Well, he's been here for a day, I hope so.
He's catching on fast.
You're doing bad on training day, Wayne, it's gonna be a rough stretch.
Absolutely.
Yeah, well.
Thank you.
So are you from that area here?
Yep, live here in Lynton, I've been here since ninety-five.
Oh.
Yep.
Yeah, actually, sir, one of the city council, too.
I am an old man on the city council, yeah, council president, actually.
And he's also a fireman? So, um, he would like to remain a fireman? So is there gonna be a problem? I mean, like I explained to him, if there's, like, if he's in court, of course, he couldn't leave court to go do the fire because you have to do those duties first, but if it's like four-thirty in the afternoon and the whistle blows off, you know?
Well, I think, because we have, we have folks on like the road department stuff are, you know, part of the local fire departments, I think, I think it would be proper to condone participation in that, so I'd say, yeah, as long as it's not causing major interruptions, I'd say for now, I'd say you probably can continue the way you always were, I mean, volunteer fire departments, EMTs, all that, I mean, we need them, so. See, if you're doing it, thank you, and yeah. Starts becoming a problem, we can probably address it then, but I would say for now, I don't wanna be taking folks off fire department and ambulance, I can tell you that, so.
I actually have stepped down from the ambulance group.
Oh, okay.
That one would have been, you know, a little bit more time devotion and things like that, as far as how my shifting would have been set up and things like that, twelve-hour shifts, could be one of those things that, you know, you'd end up getting paged out for a patient transfer to Fargo at six in the morning, well, uh, you know, the guy wouldn't be back at work until, he'd be gone all day. So whereas with the fire departments, calls are, are less frequent, usually not as time-consuming. I don't remember offhand the number of pages that we had last year, but I believe it kinda usually works out on average, maybe a couple a month.
Well, deputies usually go on them too, so you can probably just hop in with them and go for them. Maybe a carpool a little bit, right?
Yeah, so when I'm on, you know, when I'm on scene, I can still utilize any of my EMT references and things like that. I, I have renewed my license, I still will remain a state-licensed EMT until June of twenty-five, if I remember correctly, so.
And then Nina's gonna take your spot and drive the ambulance, now, since she's retired, is she?
She can hop on in the back and do her work. Driving's easy.
Okay.
Okay.
Other than that, thanks for coming in. Yeah, see ya.
Thank you. Good luck here.
Thank you.
Okay, I think the last thing is Skylar.
Now, what's on the agenda for us this, today, just the rates for Campbell Township? You guys have a new rate sheet, it's, I don't know if much has changed since twenty-twenty-two.
Well, it's up to you guys, you guys.
Right.
Do you guys have last year's rate sheet?
Yeah, you sent it out, right? I thought it looked okay, I don't know. Did you send it out in email, right?
I think I put it in here.
Oh, that's where I saw it, right.
So do you have to do a road rating for Campbell Township?
Yeah, I understand that, but the, or the rates in that?
Yeah.
It's not, that's not the Campbell Township rates, that's the, the sheet I'm thinking of is all the rates for.
And Campbell's on it too.
Right, okay. Yeah, so that's, yeah, I did get them.
So we have three hundred and fifty dollars, oh, three hundred and fifty dollars per mile for a road grading and then two hundred miles per hour for roads snowing a little. You guys wanna amend that or keep it the same, we need to know.
I think that's pretty much been the same we've had for a while.
And then usually you do a motion with it and.
Is your, does your show cross gravel at fourteen dollars per yard or sixteen dollars per yard? The other there, I'm sure, in theory?
I got there fourteen bucks per yard.
Yeah, I think we should increase that to sixteen.
To cost of what you got in those piles?
Yeah.
Are you covered enough, you think, with the cost of fuel on the, per hour?
Yeah, I think so, I mean, if you break it down on a new mortar grader cost and you do it, if you did it per hour, everything like that, so.
Appreciation, all your power.
Yeah, because there's not a lot in that township.
And they actually, because they do have a couple guys as payloaders that kind of, I mean, they kind of bust a trail a lot of times and then there's, so they, I mean, they do kind of help themselves and it's not like they even rely completely on us, but.
Yeah, and then plus they have two federally roads running through there.
Right, so we're kind of running through there anyway in a lot of ways, so.
Well, who keeps track of this, on your blade-out drivers?
Yeah.
Yeah, he, he, whenever he gets into that township, he starts his time, works it down, and then when he's done.
Okay.
Yeah, and then we don't do any gravel in there unless they.
They call for it.
They ask, so, yeah.
So I know there's been a few times, because I, I get up that way with some customers I have, and I know they, I don't know if they have kind of some pit run gravel or stuff, but they kind of do some of their own gravelings, you'll come along occasionally and they, somebody will go out with their payloaders, they might just take a load or two and level it off over a culvert and stuff, it kind of, because they don't really have any like township employees, I think everybody kind of does their own thing and, yeah, they kind of just work together up there like that, so they, I don't know, really hasn't been an issue with rates and stuff, like I think if you went up to sixteen a yard, I don't think that's out of line at all.
So I think that's about the only, only improvement, or the only, only thing we should probably increase, so.
Okay, well.
So basically, this would be, you know, if we ever did work for other people who issued off of these rates, do they?
I mean, you could, essentially, I mean, you basically have that agreement already set up, so yeah, if you were gonna start doing for a subdivision or something like that, it probably wouldn't be much different. So, just entertain a motion to approve table or deny the maintenance agreement with Campbell Township?
I'd like a motion to go up to sixteen dollars and then the rest stays the same.
Okay, Commissioner Everly makes a motion to approve the maintenance agreement with Campbell Township with the amendment that we go to sixteen dollars per yard on gravel? Is there a second to that motion?
I have a second.
Seconded by Commissioner Horn, is there any more discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye, aye opposed, agreement approved. So, plan is is to just observe and report and see what happens with the weather and then go out as soon as the visibility and conditions are reasonable enough.
Take it all down with the cat machines?
No, they're still here, they're still plugging away.
Oh, they're still going, yeah.
Yeah, there's a few roads that we still have to get it pushed back, and if we're gonna get this much, depends on how much snow we get and the wind, I mean, it's gonna pack a lot of those cuts, some of those spots, and again, pretty tough, so, we're gonna play the storm by year and see how bad it gets and at the end of it, and if it isn't as bad as they're predicting, then we can probably cut loose, so, because a couple days after this, it's supposed to warm up to fifty degrees.
So what do you, you got, you got, you got three, three contractors, three of them going in?
Yeah, right now, there's, there's three machines running, two contractors, three machines.
Well, yeah, because I mean, I think the main concern that I have too is that we're gonna have to get the snow off the edges of the roads too, so it's, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm sure you know that, but that's where, I guess in my opinion, if you keep them around a few extra days to get some of that, you know, you're gonna spend that money back in gravel and then blade work and everything anyway, rather than, you know, some of them spots where it's only as wide as the shoulders, that's gonna melt onto the road and be a nightmare too, so.
They're getting to be a nice road here.
Oh, yeah.
So what, you know, when it warms up, it really makes it even thirty degrees.
Boy, even in the middle of the afternoon.
I've seen that, yeah, it's like, wow.
The other day it was twenty-two with sunshine and then that road got soft. I mean, it was, it was freezing yet, but it was just, the sun is so powerful, that's where, you know, I think even with them snow cats, if you got some, some big nasty spots, it's gonna be worth the money to push that snow off them roads, I, you know, at least off them shoulder edges, I think. If you got them going and they're moving.
I mean, is there a way, you know, like the spring winds, that snow, I mean, wet spring does come, gets warmer, we're gonna have issues with warming haul on on the roads.
Yeah, what the hell are you gonna do?
I know, I know, but that's gonna be.
It's very old, do you have to go like that?
It's gonna be an issue, though.
Oh, absolutely, it's already kind of starting to be a slight issue on some roads, that weather.
I know we talked about that before, as far as putting load restrictions on or something like that, you know, is what we really.
That's what should be done.
Yeah, but we never did.
That's what I was thinking about.
But then how, the question becomes, how do you enforce it?
That's a problem.
South Dakota's doing it.
But last year, or the last time, they ruined a lot of roads.
Does South Dakota do it on their gravel roads?
They do it.
Do they?
Oh, yeah. Because they'll follow a tanker truck out of it, a co-op, and they'll follow them up to a rural area if they're over, they'll bail them.
Yeah, it's, it's an uphill battle, no matter what we, we do.
Well, the problem we're probably gonna have with our gravel roads is I'm assuming the pavement load restrictions are gonna be, I mean, they're probably gonna be on for a while too, because it's gonna be a wet spring, I mean, it's gonna be, you know, so, like your eighteen oh fours and everything is probably gonna be load restricted hard, thirty-four, thirteen, your smaller, just two-lane highways, so then, gonna re-divert on gravel probably as much as they can, which isn't gonna be good for us, I mean, that's.
I don't, I don't, what kind of policy can a guy put on? I mean, just put it in the paper, you can't do that, right? You have to some kind of.
I don't know, but what, the thing is, is.
You have to, right?
Even, even a weight restriction, what's proper, because I tell you what, even a forty thousand pound load under the, under the wrong trailer, and, you know, it's not even about weight, I mean.
It's the displacement.
Well, that's what I mean, you could go with, I mean, and let's face it, even an empty semi in a lot of ways sometimes does more damage than a loaded one in a sense with the bouncing, and, I mean, it's, it's hard to, it's, it's the reason why we probably haven't done it is because, other than just an all-out ban on anything bigger than a pickup, you're gonna have a hard time, I mean, it's gonna be tough, but.
And even, even pickups, the vehicles when they're wet will.
Well, I'll tell you what, I, I've, I've put a pretty good dent in some of them roads, you go by a big snow pile and run along the road and you meet someone, and my three-quarter ton pickup sinks in this part, I made a run, you know, I, I think the big thing about it is is folks are just gonna have to, I mean, it's your roads. You know, I mean, that's the one thing I just try to tell people is that, I mean, if you wanna be that neighbor that wants to destroy your road for everybody else, I guess that's kind of your own deal, we'll fix it and the bill is coming, everybody's gonna pay it, I, you know, I mean, you can do load restrictions, you can try and enforce it, pick on peoples, people are gonna still do it at night, they're gonna do it on the weekends, they're gonna do it whenever, people that are gonna run their semis over the roads when they shouldn't be are gonna do it, and it's really, I mean, it's your roads to save or wreck, that's the sad reality of it, I.
So I have a question, what am I supposed to do with low pass now? You know, because I'm starting to get some requests for permits, they wanna bring a crane in and I think they're changing out some of the blades or something, I mean, am I supposed to not approve these permits anymore?
The only thing I would say with low per, low passes, they are, they're essentially paying to damage the road in a sense. I mean, whether or not that rate is maybe enough for some of those things could be an argument, but you're, you're already kind of accepting the fact that you may do damage, that's why you're getting the permit, so I would say that's probably okay.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
I mean, I don't know if you guys disagree with that, that's, that's basically why you buy a permit, you're, you're acknowledging there's a pretty good chance your, your load is somehow different than usual and you might.
Sure, you made it so damn strict.
What is, I'm like, what is?
Well, you know, it's.
Well, there's one crane coming in here now, that was a five thousand dollar permit.
Oh, it is a five thousand.
And they're coming in on the sixth of April, so they plan to lose that Thursday.
Right, you know, I, I mean, I would say five thousand dollars is a, it's a fair permit fee for running a crane across that in some ways might not damage the road at all, and, I mean, I don't know, I.
Well, I'm guessing they're doing it out of a necessity.
Well, are, are we, do we, we, we don't set our own rates with that low permit.
No, we have.
Right, so I mean, that's the same rate as what, twenty other counties?
Yeah.
Twenty-five other counties, so I mean, that's basically what they're, I mean. Right, and I mean, that's overseen by a, by a group of.
I just wanted to make sure that.
No, but I, I mean, just to give you an update too, I mean, the low pass permit system, I mean, that's, they got their own committee that reviews permit fees and all that, I mean, that's, that comes from the oil field too, so I mean.
But they don't do that on farmers, do they, that low permit?
Hmm, well, that's for whoever requests a permit, I mean, now, like the farmers, I don't think have to on most stuff, but, I mean, as long as they're, it's basically anything that's not a le, illegal load.
It's oversized.
It's oversized loads, so it's either way too long, way too wide, way too heavy, stuff like that, then they have to get a permit.
Yeah, I just remembered there a couple years ago, well, they got stuck in the middle of the road with crane cars and everything else, you know.
Right, well, then they're mad at us because they're stuck on the road, but it's like, well, you shouldn't have been on the road with that, it wasn't the road's fault, so yeah, it's gonna be a problem, but I mean, people are just gonna have to exercise their own caution and know their limits, and if they don't, we're gonna have to go out and fix the roads, and if they make it so the roads are that expensive to fix, then it's gonna cost more, I, I mean, that's kind of.
Maybe we have to put some road close signs on some of those roads where they're.
Some of them probably should be closed, I don't disagree with that, at least temporarily, like if you know there's water all the way up to the shoulders, you know that road's gonna be soft, you know.
Just to save.
Right, I mean, even if it's just, you know, the board type, you know, the wood type sign, just hey, road is temporarily closed or whatever, we're probably gonna have to, because there's gonna be some spots, I mean, we all know we battled them the last two years, every road that we either raised or temporarily shut down till it came out of the water is probably going back in the water again, I mean.
I think it's gonna get ugly this spring.
Well.
There's no doubt it's gonna have to.
The only thing I will say is I did have to do some digging in Southeast of Hague last week, and that ground was dry for seven feet, it was bone dry, and that gave me a little hope, I, I think the ground is gonna take a lot of the moisture.
Well, it's just a.
We get, we get seventy-two degrees and an inch of rain, I don't think it's gonna matter, but if, if we get fifty-five and twenty at night, I think, they could, there's a lot of room out there, trick beds are dry.
Biggest thing, it cools off at night, yeah.
If we get a ugly warm streak or something, though, yeah, it could be everywhere, we'll see, I don't know, I think the culverts are pretty well, I think everything was empty, I don't know if there are a lot of frozen culverts.
Not a, not that I'm seeing now, or not that we've really been looking, but when it warms up during the daytime, it starts running in there, then it gets cold, it freezes in there, and then it's gonna build up, and that's what happens.
But I mean, we didn't have a lot of like water-filled ditches with half-filled culverts, so that's a good thing, you know, I, I, and I think, I can tell you another thing from a little bit of digging, I, well, I shouldn't say a little, but we did a lot of digging this year, I never hit anything deeper than a foot of frost, so I, I think even the deeper culverts, I think they're frog, I don't think they froze down much, maybe the ends, like you said, some freeze thaw on the ends, but I don't, hopefully, foresee a lot of like pushing up frozen culverts kind of deal, so.
Did you get notice from someone on that drainage ditch coming from Bungardt or Wake? Did you speak to that guy that I called, even?
Um.
On the south side of that culvert on that drainage ditch on?
Yeah.
This one at Bungardt and Wake off eighty-three about a half.
With the gate?
No, it's not by the gate.
Oh.
It's on a culvert on the south side, Don Wickenhaser called.
I believe I talked to him, but it could be, I talked to quite a few people in the last one.
Yeah, there was trees and stuff in there, right?
Trees, something on the, on the south side.
Somebody called me about that too.
I'll double check, but, yeah.
Just like overgrowth and what?
No.
I don't know, there's covers that are washed into it.
There's tree branches and stuff.
And it can't drain out, and then it backs up into the land mass.
Oh.
And he said it's not a big deal, just needs to be like addressed like with an excavator.
Yep, yep.
Pulled off and pull them out.
Yeah.
Then there's all kinds of room, I'd have to bring that area to peel it back and just get it open again. Make note of it, Scott.
Yeah.
Don Wickenhaser.
Yeah, I'll double check on that, because I've had a few phone calls, I mean, with the warming up, people are getting a little, you know, so. Just an update, that last meeting, I think it was, was it? Just an update, that last meeting, I think it was the, was the, would be the February meeting when we went over that stuff with old engineering, about, uh, the two crossings and then the Singer Lake and stuff like that. Uh, the Singer Lake one, we can actually go and use federal funding for, so we're gonna move that direction with it.
For the culvert extensions, right?
Culvert extensions of the new culverts. Because it wouldn't have been bid out till twenty twenty-four anyway, so, that one we moved to, using federal funds, so, it's, it's a little bit more of a process, but they're gonna start the paperwork process now on that, so.
So you'll address like this summer?
Sorry, what's that?
You'll address it this summer, or what?
Uh, well, we're gonna have to do something this, to get us by again, but, because it won't be bid till twenty twenty-four, probably this, this spring of twenty twenty-four.
We'll probably have to pump again or do something if it gets.
Well, what I'm hoping we can do is, we know where the culverts are at, and hopefully we can open and expose them and let it run through there, but they're so short that we just didn't wanna have a huge hole next to the road during the winter time.
Right.
Like, well, that's our plan, is we're gonna expose them, try to open them up the best I can, so hopefully it flows through there, but we're, they're, they're right next to the road, so.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a drop-off, so we have to have extra precautions, so.
Is there one west of me on that Shaw Lake, like we're getting?
I believe, but that's a whole, I've had a few phone calls on that, and there's talk with the water board and the water district, they were gonna put a pipe in there somewhere, something to drain it.
Well, originally, they had talked about doing some kind of a release pipe down to, I believe that's actually Beaver Creek too, down there by.
To West by Soccer.
It would be like Tony Zucker's place, and then, um.
That isn't the one that I'm referring to, though, there must be one on South where a culvert got closed when they built that road up.
Oh, I, I see, Sixth?
South, I thought it was.
Well, I know, uh, I just, just.
You need to call Berg at Sean.
Yeah, Sean Berg at, I've been talking to him, that's on Sixth Avenue, so.
Is it Sixth, okay.
Yeah, it needs to be in the corner, he said something like that, and I guess they've talked to the previous road superintendent too about it or whatever, so, good. Like, he, yeah, he called me in February, wanted me to, well, there's a lot of snow in there, like, I'm not gonna go fishing for culvert at this point, so.
Well, because that's where, didn't they, didn't they kind of rip wrap to the north on that, like maybe like, like a hundred feet or something, just so they, because they were, they were pulling water out of there.
I don't know what the deal was.
Well, when they built that up, because they had that water, um, they built that grain auger into a water.
Oh, man.
Water extension, and they were pumping off that, so when they, when the contractor raised that eighty-ninth, they, uh. They like went into the north on that Sixth Avenue, just only like a hundred feet, because that road was underwater, but they built it up enough so that they could use it to turn around the little water trucks, and then they did it to rebuild the federal road.
Okay.
I don't know if they blocked the culvert or.
I thought there was a culvert closed by Singer.
I don't know, but.
Oh, and that I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Okay, why not here?
Yeah, because that Sixth was underwater that whole time when we raised that federal road, and then I think it did finally come out, I think we might have bladed it a little bit, but. Yeah, I had the rock road.
Yeah, that's going to Tony Rock.
Yeah. That's.
I didn't know where it's at, he had just.
Yeah, I don't know either, I just know that they only, because everybody said, why didn't they finish building it, so they were trying to build the federal road, they just built it up enough so they could use it for a water truck, turn it on, and then they had their pump and everything, they were pulling water out of there so they could spray water for compaction, so.
We'll look at it this, I know you've concerned a lot, and we, we've talked, we've talked on it a few times now, so. Well, other than that, there's not a whole lot going on, other than snowing again, so.
Are you, I mean. Well, yeah, well, once the wind comes up and stuff, it's kinda hard to do anything out there, but, uh, I know there, you probably won't be able to do much tomorrow either, all depends on what it does, huh?
Yeah, it's, it's visibility and if it's feasible for us to be out there.
Yeah.
If it's, if it's blowing in right behind us, it's just not feasible, now we're just wasting fuel now.
I know, it's like you're endless, uh, yeah.
Well, the, the, the one thing I will say is, it seems to me at this point, wish it's, I mean, not wish, but Strasburg and Hazleton, I think aren't having in school at all today or tomorrow. Litten's not today.
Today.
Right, I think they're all, and their, Litten will probably be not tomorrow too.
Well, I don't think.
And then on top of that, I think almost every county I've seen, they're, they're telling everybody they're not even thinking about going out till Thursday morning, just because the wind is supposed to be so big on Wednesday, even if they only get four inches of snow, it's.
You're talking fifty-five, sixty.
Right, so I mean, it kinda sounds like the agreed consensus with like Stutsman and, and Wells County and a lot of these other ones is they're, they're pretty much telling people they're not gonna have a blade out till Thursday unless it's like an emergency or something, but. I did, I know Milo Kramer reached out to me yesterday after this forecast, and he said that he's just gonna think about lining up a dozer to possibly rent, but if we would need another dozer, like if it's. At that time when he called me, I think we were in the eighteen to twenty-four inch range, it's come down since then, but he even said that he would, he would be able to probably secure a dozer for a couple weeks if we needed.
But we use it ours at all?
No, I don't have any manpower to run it, most everybody's been in a piece of equipment, so.
Yeah. But I mean, we have ours available too, that's.
It is available and ready to go, and the whole plan was, we're gonna get caught up and then use it to finish this last few ourselves in-house, but now with another storm coming, right? I mean, that'd still be the initial plan, is when we can get caught up, when our equipment could. When we can park the motor grader, because the snows are, the roads are up pretty open, then we'll start using our dozer first.
I just know Milo's offer was more like he thought too, like if we had major power outages where we were gonna need multiple pieces, that he would, he said he would, he would try and make something available, at least, you know, to help out, so it's just something just to think about, I, I, we didn't make no commitments, he didn't. There's no agreement, no contract, he just said that he was gonna try and be available for it too, so.
We're prepared as best we can be for this.
I would say.
Snow event again, yeah. It's been a very interesting winter.
Well, hey, at least now you'll probably get the title of having the worst, the worst winter on record, at least, at least snowfall wise.
Could have started off the year.
Yep, so.
Yeah, we can only go up from here, but the other thing I wanna address, this last, uh, commissioner meeting, when I brought forth the pay scale increases and stuff like that, I don't know if you guys had a chance to review them.
I did, you know, I, I talked to our HR lady Pam, and she is working on a pay scale, and I guess I'd like to see what she comes up with.
You talked to her?
Yes, I did.
What the heck?
She, she's working on a pay scale or like a step program?
Pay scale, I can't, how she addressed it, pay scale, she was working on some, yeah, she was working on it for the corn house, and I thought, well, they could, you know, adapt some, and then she comes up with something now, I wanted to see what she comes up with.
I think that thing you had there was really good, though, I thought that was a pretty good deal.
Right, well, I wanted to just say too, that I, I did email Pam back and forth a little bit, and I know she said she was really busy, she was gonna give me a call back, but she kinda made it sound like it's gonna be very similar, pretty much. The numbers might be different, like the actual wages, but the, the process, what you were doing is probably gonna be the same, so, once we see where, like where she was coming at with that, then we can try and make an evaluation of moving on.
Well, I don't know, like, eh, why can't we plug our numbers into her formula?
Right, well, that's what I'm saying, we're just kinda.
If we authorize the pay increase now, then whenever her scale comes in, we just plug our numbers in.
Right, and if she's gonna come with that scale, then that's, that's what we're waiting for, I just know she told me she was pretty busy, so that's where, once she comes up with that, if that's, if she comes up with the same step and, you know, deal like you did, where it brings in. All that information and all, the only thing different is the wages, then yeah, then we can decide if that, you know, your wages, her wages, whatever's gonna go in there, so.
So Gary, what did she say? How long would it take, did she say?
She didn't say.
Well, that's what I was just waiting to find out.
Yeah, she just said she was working on it.
If she, I wanted to show her Skylar's deal, because if she said that's exactly what she was gonna do, then you're right, we couldn't like implement this, like what you were suggesting, if we wanted to, and not screw up what she was doing for the process of the whole county, so, that's what we're just waiting for, so.
And, and there is, I, you know, there is another department that did approach him before you came about, you know, you said something about, you're the only department, no, there was another department did approach about wage increases, so.
At a meeting? Because I don't see anybody go to that meeting, yeah.
Kinda, yeah.
So, and I, I get it, like, I don't wanna rock the boat here too much, but you guys, I've come in here a few times, and you say, make this scale, get it done, we wanna see this structure. Then I do it, and now we're waiting for HR to.
We're not gonna jump the gun.
Yeah.
Well, I understand we're not gonna jump the gun, but.
Well, I think the big thing was is that Pam ended up getting pretty busy, and that's where she was working on our deal, and she probably would have had it by now, but she just ended up getting a little busy, so.
Well, I've heard she's been working on it for quite some time.
Well, probably, because it probably does take some time to do, so, I mean.
Well, I'm not, I'm not arguing that it does, but, I mean, the longer we stretch this out, and lo, like, we have yet to get another application for this position, right? Like, I haven't seen any come across my desk of you.
No, we're having that happen in all positions, so.
Well, I, I know, because what do you, what's the end thing here, is the, the pay increases.
Well, I hear other things out there, not only pay.
What are you hearing out there?
All the things that are going on in the county and stuff like that, you know.
Like what?
Yeah.
It's just, I don't know, they, they just made remarks, not only the pay, it's just things that, they, they didn't come on and say what, what, they just said, you know, we just not interested, the pay doesn't have, you know, isn't everything about it, that's what they told me, so. They didn't come on and say what other things, they just looked at that.
Well, I wanna bring forth that there was some pay increases that were done during budget times, that there was no scale needed for that.
Right. It's still done during budget time, I mean, that's the other reason why this is taking a little bit of time, historically, we don't do raises outside of the budget, I mean, that's.
I don't understand, I wasn't either on the budget.
Neither was I, so.
Was the budget, didn't you make the adjustments then?
Yeah.
And why are these adjustments coming forth now again?
Well, he did, but he wasn't, he wasn't informed right away, he didn't, he just kinda.
There's some miscommunications on this budget here.
Right.
So he, he's, he's got the funds in the budget to.
Yeah, I'm not asking for additional funds, my, my budget was approved for a certain thing, and then you, the commissioner decided on the pay raises.
It's just, it's just a pay scale structure was, but he's got the money there for it, it's just a matter of implementing it.
Skylar was under the assumption he was gonna get to come in and, and bring forward his idea for the pay raises, where we just did a three percent across the board, because that's the way we've always done it, was. I mean, like I said, with Nick in France, is that what you guys decided you wanna give them, that's what we'll give them, and so that's what we did, where Skylar's interpretation was he was gonna get to come in, make his, you know, they had their departmental budget part, but the raises were never really a part of that with the road usually. But Skylar, you know, that brings a good point, that if, you know, he's gonna bring his ideas to the table, you know, that's fine, it's just, since it was his first budget cycle like that, we've always done it where we just decide what we're gonna do, that's what we did, so. Skylar actually had it in his budget and just, it was under highway tax, which is something that we usually see as kind of a set amount, because that's the money we get back from fuel costs, so. Like even all, yeah, when I looked at the budget, I'm like, oh, that's what the highway tax number's gonna be, okay, not realizing that Skylar had put money in there or appropriated money, requested money for raises in that highway taxing. So that's why when he said he had the money in the budget, we were all confused, because we're like, well, I don't remember seeing, you know, wage increases of any line item in the budget, well, it was under highway tax, which was just, it's just not normally the way we've done things, that's why it was a miscommunication.
Salary come, which the highway department.
Right, and that's, I'm not saying it was the wrong place to put it, I'm just saying historically, we're just like, we're like, oh, I wouldn't have thought that the highway tax number was, you know, changed, I thought that was just, you know, generally a number that.
Means that I do the budget, can I speak a little bit here?
Yeah, it will make sense.
Okay. When John came in and did the highway tax budget, he wanted, he asked for some, two full-time people and some temporary employees, correct, Skylar?
Correct.
That's what he wanted. And then you guys decided on what the raises were gonna be, and then I asked you guys, do you want me to cut out what John put in there? Because, or do you want me to keep it in there, because we were gonna be two hundred some thousand dollars short in highway tax. And I said, if you keep this in there, we have to pull two hundred thousand from the permit fund, and at the official budget hearing, I said, what do you want me to do with highway tax? Do we cut it down now, or what do you wanna do, because you were only giving that three percent, and you guys said, leave it in there, in case we hire temporary people, we have it appropriated for, and we'll pull that out of the permit fund. That's why his budget was never decreased. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, because that communication did happen, where I would have cut it down after you gave the three percent, but then you told me keep it in there, because you have to hire temporary people to work, because you were so sure.
Right, but the miscommunication with that too is not only was there some money appropriated or requested for temporary help and for full-time employees, but Skylar had also put money in there for what he thought the raises were going to be.
Right, and then you guys cut that down to three percent.
Skylar did what a department did typically does, and adjusted the pay rates, but we normally didn't do that with the road department, we, I mean, all the other departments, we always.
Well, usually like when all the other departments put, okay, let's say the sheriff would put in his budget for a certain dollar amount of raises.
Right.
And you only give a certain dollar amount, usually I cut that out of there then, because we don't need to levy those taxes if we're not gonna be spending that money.
Exactly.
And so what happened with highway tax, is you guys told me to keep it in there, in case you do hire temporary help that is there, I mean, I'm not arguing or anything, I just wanna make sure that.
Right, no, and that's the whole point, is the whole thing was a miscommi, the whole thing was a miscommunication in the sense that Skylar didn't really get to come and advocate what he thought the raises were gonna be. But that's not the way we ever usually did things, and so, even the highway tax one is always a little influx, because it's usually short anyway.
Right.
What we get from the state versus what we need, we're always putting in from another fund anyway, so, it's not a surprise to go, well, we're gonna have to put a hundred thousand into it from, from county road bridge, or whatever fund makes the most sense to put back in there, so. That's why it was such an easy miscommunication, because you're like, well, we're always short on the highway fund, and then not realizing part of the reason we were short on the highway fund is because Skylar had already put numbers in there, which was fine, it was probably even the right place to do it, it just wasn't communicated that way. It's not really a big deal, just the only thing about it is, is that's why we're not used to talking about wage increases outside of the budget, so it's not happening as fast as you like, and that's just. And a part of it is, we have been working on this pay scale, trying to get things organized amongst the whole county, so.
We told him too, you know, go ahead, set up pay scale, well, now he did, and now he's asking us to implement it, and.
Right, well, we're ready to implement it, I just don't want it to contradict what Pam's working on too, because then it totally defeats the purpose of what we had Pam working on, that's the only reason why.
But if it's gonna take, if it's gonna take her three more months, well, then what's the?
Well, we're not waiting three more months, I'm waiting, I was hoping this week to even hear from her, where if she tells me like, yeah, what Skylar's implementing is exactly what I'm gonna do, then we can move forward with Skylar's request.
But if it's gonna take another all summer, then.
I don't think it'll take that long, it's just, it's just, we're waiting, I'm waiting to hear her opinion on whether or not it's gonna work with what she's working on, and if it doesn't. Try and implement Skylar's idea as close to what Pam was working on, so we can get the road guys where their budget was gonna be and where they wanted to be, but also working with Pam's plan, so we're not working against each other all the time, that's all, so. I think we, hopefully, in my opinion, it'll probably be resolved, I'm not putting a deadline on it, never mind. No, I, I, but I, I would say soon, and then, and I made communication with her, and I'm hoping she'll respond soon, so, and she's super busy, and I understand that, so, when the time comes, we'll get it resolved.
She probably took the same pay scale I did out of Burley County, right?
Well, that's why I think it's gonna be very similar, almost the same, because if it's coming from Burley County's model, which we kinda asked her to do, and that's what Skylar was basing his off of, I don't think it's gonna be an issue, we're just looking for confirmation, so we don't have more miscommunication. So, that's all. We haven't forgot about it, we're just working on it.
Good.
I can do, I, I got jumped a couple of times, and this way it kinda gives you the chance to explain about it, about the company vehicle going back and forth.
Jesus.
I just, I'm just letting, giving you the opportunity to explain it directly to what it.
This will be the last time I explain this, because I've explained this enough times, I've been jumped about this enough times, a vehicle goes home for picking up parts, like yesterday, it went to Bismarck to pick up steel for RV box. Pick up what? Steel for RV box from Pulte Steel.
No, I just give you the opportunity.
Because this has been going on enough times.
Yeah, I just want people to hear it this way.
Do they not think that I put in enough time and effort to this county, or what, because last month alone was a hundred and ten extra hours I put into this county, that I don't get paid for, a hundred and ten. I'm also doing a job of two people out there, I'm running a blade route, and I'm managing the contractors and everything like that. So, I hope this is the last time, because this is not the first time that I've got a phone call on this.
Well, that's why, that's why I wanted you to get a.
If that's the case, then other people have nothing better to do than to follow me around, so.
I get a lot of heat, a lot of dudes, yeah.
Then you know what, they can go to town and get the.
I know a lot, a lot, I have heard of it.
But I'm sure, but I.
But I mean, because this is getting ridiculous.
Well, let's just say, let's just calm down here, the thing to remember is that, you know, there were plenty of times, I remember, when we had guys that were locally the road superintendents, and we sent employees to Bismarck all the time to pick things up, and then. Be whether they're, you know, going to Bismarck at two in the afternoon on the payroll and picking things up and getting back by five, or you have a guy like Skylar who. Or you have a guy like Skylar who lives in Bismarck, who at the end of the day is taking the pickup home to pick things up in the morning, or before things close, or, you know, another thing I know has always happened in the past, it would happen with, I mean, with Nick lived in the country, Francis lived in the country, they drove their trucks home, because either on the way home or on the way to work, they drove another road or another route to check things out. You know, that, that pickup is made for working, especially you take, Skylar ran the Hazleton route early in the winter until we hired Justin. So there were a lot of times where he was probably in Linton, and he drove the routes home, or on the way home, he jettled a road or two, or whatever, I mean. The people are going to be upset every time they see the county truck outside of Linton or outside of Hazleton or something, you're always going to get them calls, and I think, I mean, when you say things like, I get a lot of heat about it, I think if you really sum it up, there's probably the same three or four phone numbers most of the time making those comments, because those are the same people that are always seeing it, and it's fine to ask questions, and there's nothing wrong with it, but I think we have explained it several times, and I've asked around, I've asked the other employees, I've talked to guys, and I don't hear anybody, you know, telling me anything different, so. You either got a pretty tight-lipped group, or you're doing things the right way, that's where I've seen, so I don't, I mean. I know, first year we had that one truck, I think Nick put eighty some thousand miles on it, and probably seventy eight thousand of them were all work, and there was probably a few that he maybe shouldn't have took, I mean, it's going to happen, you do other things, but, I mean, it's a big county, and there's a lot of roads to look at, and there's stuff to pick up, and let's face it, you got to go to Bismarck to get it most of the time, and if it's not Bismarck, you'd be going to Mo Bridge or somewhere else anyway, so. I don't know, I, I, I've gotten those phone calls, they've been from the same people, and most of those people, it seems, they usually have an axe to grind more than anything, so.
How early do you guys start in the morning?
Seven.
Seven?
During the snowstorm, we were doing seven to seven, twelve hour, twelve hour days.
And then they quit usually, I mean, sometimes they go longer at night too then, or?
Uh, very few times, but if they do, they, they call ahead and.
And they let you know?
Yeah, they have, that has to be approved in their, their time cards, like they.
By the clock is on.
Jot it down, or they have to call or text, and I make them text me when they get back in.
It seemed to me that seven to seven was pretty common, because I know there were times when I was in Hazleton, and I seen the Hazleton blade pulling in, it was about six forty-five to seven, and I know Al goes, there was a lot of times he came by my place at like six fifty, like he must have just been making the pass by my place to wing it off or something, it was always, because I remember coming in going, because my mother-in-law would call me, like, hey, could I come out and watch your granddaughter, like, yeah, Al just went by at six forty-five tonight, so.
Sometimes there was, there was a few eight-hour, or they'd come in at eight o'clock at night, like just because. Well, for the most part, it was, we tried to have set hours, I mean, when you're plowing, you got a mile left, you just hit it when you're out there, it's.
Because sometimes, yeah, you want to finish it, stay home that hour, yeah.
Well, I think you just try, like you said, you shoot for seven to seven, and sometimes you get in twenty minutes earlier, and sometimes you get in twenty minutes later, and that's where it is, well.
If a person wanted to start it earlier, they would just ask you and get it approved if they wanted to, and not?
On a certain circumstances, because I'm not going to have one guy start at six and then.
Okay, that's why I wondered.
It's, it's only a very case-by-case scenario, it's like, nobody's going to start at six so they can be done at four thirty.
No, no, I didn't, yeah, I just wanted that they started six, you know, tip to get the road, but no, if, if that, whatever you want to do, that's fine, I did ask her.
Yeah, well, I think I'm, that's everything I have to discuss, I guess, then, anything else you guys want to discuss?
New guys working out okay?
We're doing pretty good, I mean, this is, we threw them to the wolves, obviously, this year.
You got the blades back all fixed and all?
Uh, all the one.
That deer?
Uh-huh.
That deer, the undercarriage, it's all still hanging?
Oh, no, that one's up and running, we have a transmission issue now, it probably has to be whole, already whole Bismarck can get a new transmission for it now.
It's under warranty, right? What happened there? What's the, the one that's on the edge of warranty or out of warranty, where's that at?
Uh, it was down in Strasburg, they were using it, because one of our machines was down, but they got that back up and running, so.
Parking that one away?
Parking that one away, because we're, we're pushing that envelope, I actually talked to the salesman, and it was, that other one's still four weeks old, so.
Well, I'd, I'd keep that one hidden as much as possible, I mean, if you have to use it, use it, obviously, but yeah.
And that's what we did, it was parts, and people were probably seeing a part there and don't understand it, but that's why we weren't using it, because if.
Yeah, you should have.
Order a transmission or anything, that's a thirty to sixty to eighty thousand dollar.
What happened on that transmission there? Just, just went out?
Just went out, that's one of the clutch packs, they thought they could get it with a cylinder wipe, but it didn't, didn't do it, and they found metal shavings inside the oil, so.
And they got the wing fixed on the one sixty?
Yep.
On the captain?
Yep, they come and welded it back on.
What happened there?
Weld tore.
Weld, the weld tore in the back.
It was Butler's deal on that one?
Straight down the center, for, we're, we're, we're still, what, what's going to go on there? They're going to order a new piece for it and re-weld on a new piece, because they had to straighten it, because it was bent. So we're still in, still in talks with them with their, their final plan, but they have it up and operational now, so.
You still have issues on the range, crack it up?
Not, not lately, I don't know what, that was just a fluke thing, I don't know, I talked to a few different counties too, and they were.
Shit happens.
Yeah, it's just, we changed a different way, we put them on a little bit, we ground all the paint off the backside, so it's metal to metal now, so people were saying that was what was causing that.
Really, just that movement on that damn paint, couldn't do it.
Yeah, like I've heard that a lot, if you get that paint in there, and that paint breaks down, and it puts just that fine little bit in there, and then it starts just.
Way, way.
I've heard that on combines with tools, tool will happen. We'll see, well, hopefully that fixes the problem, well. Yeah, other than that, everything's operational.
Good. Any other questions?
Oh, tarring, so they're not even questioning right now, huh?
Actually, we were, before March, at the end of February, we were kind of starting to think a little gearing up for it. There is some, we're working on, our biggest problem is getting the oil, because the state doesn't want to give it up. Talked to a different county, they are like, no, we're going to keep it pretty tight-lipped this year until maybe till the end. Depends on now with the, everything got pushed back, a couple of weeks now, I'm sure. We're actually looking into getting a purchase of our own tank.
I was going to say, because I, I got approached by one of the city board members, and I know we had talked about that, like.
Right.
That was like two years ago with Francis, whatever, he was going to look at getting a rack tank, and then we were going to fill, but then I know part of the issue is not all the cities use the same stuff, but maybe if they would. Some of them use the oil, and some of them use like emulsion or something, that was a big difference, but, because I know that would have been nice to just set up like one tank, and we could share it with the cities, you know, disperse the cost, and, you know, we have the real, the county shop and stuff, where a lot of them don't have the space to put a decent-sized tank.
Well, we got a price on a tank, but there's some other costs that go with it, like footings and stuff like that, so we're just waiting to get that. They actually just sent the drawing out the other day, so we're going to contact a contractor and see if.
Were you, did you talk to the cities at all, or did they talk to you?
We've been in talk a little bit with Litton City here, the city of Litton, because we use the same oil, and I, I.
Tanks got to have heaters on too, right?
Correct, correct, it, it'd be, if you, the one we got priced on would look just like the states out there. Because it's the, we tried looking for used ones, and then trying to get the retrofit to fit our needs. By the time it just becomes to be the price where you just buy new, be done with it, and then, it's our thoughts where we would, we would take all the costs and own everything out there, and then just sell them the oil. So, that way there's only one name on the owning the tank and everything.
Might probably be a better way to do it.
I talked to a few different counties that work like that with their cities, and they're like, that's the, I don't know if this is true, but they said a lot of auditors don't like to see different names on one, one piece, I don't know, true or not, but.
But on the other.
Got a co-owned in it.
Right, the other thing too is you don't have people changing the ideas, or wanting to, you know, pay more or less after it's all done, where it's like, you can kind of do it. I mean, everybody's going to need that oil, I mean, they got tar every year, I mean, it's not really going to change too much, so.
So you're going to have enough for this year, or get enough for this year yet, or don't you know yet?
Uh, our tank is, our, our cart is full, usually we use two carts. Last year we only got one cart, and then it was, the state was finally let us have some after the, in June or July. By then it was too late, so we just filled their cart for this spring, so.
Does Strasburg use the same oil?
I.
They come in with a hundred gallon.
One of them.
Then, no, they must use a different kind of.
One of them, out of the three big cities, one of them used different stuff, because that's where, because we had had that conversation, because Francis had found a used rack tank or something, or something up at the oil field, turned out to be a junker, that's why he didn't get it, but we had kind of, we were working that out, where we were going to do that, because we had the same issue during COVID, nobody could get oil, that was a big problem, and then we found out that only like one or two of the cities using the same stuff anyway, we're like, well, shoot, that kind of. But then afterwards, they'd made the comments that they should just switch, and we should all do the same thing, do it, so that's why we're kind of at where we're at, or. I don't think this is going to go away, it's been two, three years now, and we're having the same problem, so. And if we don't tar them, I mean, you take like the chip seals and all them, now they're going to start cracking again, and you don't tar them, that's all waste, I mean, it's.
And we use the same oil as the state does, so.
So which, which ones didn't get done last year, then?
Uh, pretty much Braddock and Kentair, because the ones they were going to chip seal, like that.
Right, we kind of got away with it, because we chip sealed them anyway, but yeah, going forward, we're, you know, we did all our chip sealing on most of that stuff, so we're going to have to be tarred.
About the mile out there by Strasburg, was that tar last year?
You, the mile coming off of, what is that, eighty-eight?
Eighty-eight.
Yeah, that got.
Eighty-eight, right.
Yeah, that got, and that one takes a lot, because of.
Yeah. So, was that up for chip seal, or was that up for this year, right?
That's.
That's getting a lot of penalties.
Yeah, that's.
This year, next year.
You, I don't know if you were on board, you, you know that we only maintain that road north of Litton here. We do that one in the city, takes care of the other, so. And we have talked about extending that pavement out there, we still have book affectives?
Oh, on Tower Hill?
Yeah.
Well, I don't know if we ever really had anybody like Wold or somebody look at what that, because I'm sure that would take some dirt work and stuff too, probably, because you're going to have to have a.
That's a tough hill.
Oh, that is.
Put one going up.
You'll have to widen the road, I'm sure, and have your clearance zones, or where, you know, I mean, you're going to have to have something.
You know what makes that road so horrible? Speed. Coming down and going up.
You got that stoppin' right down there, yeah.
The only thing that scared me about pavement is coming down that hill like, like this time of year. I mean, that'd be pretty greasy too, though, is the only trouble, yeah, it's a rough son of a gun when you get off that pavement.
That hill going west out to eighteen oh four suddenly, on that scrawny route, that, that decline.
Yeah, right, going onto west.
Eighteen oh seven, that's terrible.
That's a tough one.
That's a tough one.
That's the same deal, though, everybody, everybody's doing about sixty when they come over that hill.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's all we got.
All right.
Okay, well, the only thing left to do here would be a, um, building permit for Eric Wender to erect a twenty by thirty storage building on Lot seventeen and Lot one eight. And six Rudy subdivision.
Capital.
No, capital.
Section five, township one thirty.
Wait, that, uh.
Yeah.
Rudy subdivision of North Harbor, I mean, Rudy.
Yeah, he kind of did.
Okay. Well, it's on Tower Side of the Bay.
We got you good, Tom.
That, uh, Wingers, he's putting a storage shed, and setbacks are good, four fifteen from the back, one fifteen from the side. They haven't started anything, just put it in this corner, it's.
That's your house here.
And that's all good, Josh?
For Wingers.
Okay, thank you.
He's got a warranty.
So it looks like there's already like a storage container or something like that there, or?
Yeah, I think they have a camper.
He's just.
So you didn't see any issues, Josh, nothing?
No, no, I don't.
Okay, I guess we'll entertain a motion to approve table or deny the permit for Eric Wender.
We'll make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Terry makes a motion to approve, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Commissioner Holmes, any more discussion on Billy permit for Eric Wender? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye, opposed, permit approved. Next one is a plat, out on lot eight, auditors lot one, in northwest quarter of section twenty-five, township one thirty-one, range seventy-five, Emmens County.
Let's go there, just pull it out of the yard, I think they're selling it, they want by the hole, be a piece, so they're just pulling it off.
Where's that one at?
Around there.
It's used to struggle, they were sheriffless.
Yeah, oh, oh.
Those people, they broke the stuff up to the east.
So they want to sell the farmyard and keep the eggplant or something?
Yeah, or someone's winding out and.
Sure, yeah, they're just selling pieceville.
So it's good.
I'll make a motion to approve. Commissioner, we make a motion to approve the plat, out on lot eight, second by Commissioner Terry, any more discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye, opposed, plat approved. The only other thing would be the bills, and do you want to review them applications or anything? In reminding that you're on camera, so, and say people's names, read personal information in those reviews, so. Other than that, just be the bills.
The only thing I should.
Oh, is there anything else?
Well, the only thing I should have said yet, uh, Dave Tardowski sent me a picture of that road going off, I hit the place where it's all watered, and we're trying to rebuild that.
Who's this?
Dave Tardowski.
You tell me, I'm out there, buddy.
Out by Larry, I'm with.
Yeah.
It's underwater.
Well, it's kind of, I mean, I suppose now that it's melting, it's all shit, you know, he just wanted me to show you guys a picture, just to make sure we're still on board with getting that fixed.
Yeah, we're going to have to work on some of them, you got it.
All this stuff needs to be signed. I don't know, I got this from the, it's from the terminal, I don't know if they want you guys to see this, or if they could send it to us.
That, that, sure, that, the, uh, definitely part time.
One, twenty hours.
See you, Sharon, thank you.
Good to be back.
Thanks, Sharon.
Can you email me a copy of the signed reservation?
I will, I will.
And then will you be sending that off to?
Do I try, who do I send it to besides our senator and our outs? Is there a place in Bismarck, I can, you know anywhere I can send it to where all the legislators get it, you know? I don't know, maybe the association of counties might know.
Okay, I'll ask them.
But, but if you need help sending anything out, I'll.
Okay.
I got time, I'm retired.
Well, thanks for coming in, Sharon.
Hey, thank you, I appreciate your support.
Absolutely. So this is a letter from the North Dakota Department of Mineral Resources, sent to the Honorable Jessica Along from Jamestown, but it doesn't say her title of what she is. It says Miss Along, pursuant to section thirty-eight dash oh eight point oh one dash oh four point oh two of the North Dakota Century Code, please be advised that the Paragon Geophysical Services Incorporated was issued the above-captured permit on March tenth, twenty twenty-three, will remain in effect for the period of one year. The entire permit can be viewed on their website, please contact for information. Todd Holger, permit manager for geophysical supervisor, so. Looks like they got a geophysical exploration permit from the Department of Mineral Resources on February twenty-seventh.
So is that, is that signified graphic?
Yeah, it looks like that was in Stutzman County here. I don't know, I don't know why they, so they sent that to you?
To the commissioner.
Is that because it was the same offer that was your last one?
Yeah, so it looks like.
Go on there to get it.
I don't, I think they're showing that they have permits.
They did it in Stutzman.
Right, so I'm assuming this is the Stutzman County permit, I'm assuming they sent it to us to let us know that they got one in Stutzman. Right, so I'm assuming this is the Stutzman County permit, I'm assuming they sent it to us to let us know that they got one in Stutzman. Too bad we don't care. Not unless anybody's changed their mind. Thanks for the information.
That's just a letter of encouragement, I suppose.
Why didn't you share it?
Even the census, like, the weather gets bad and fall, and it's a moving area.
Um, so I had talked to Sheriff Sanders, because the historical, wow, it actually cleared up out there for some reason, so. See all the top telling it, anyway. Historically, what happens is Sheriff Sanders will get ahold of me, usually at Greestalk, and Gary Sanger, the DOT, he usually does all the legwork on. What they're doing, what they're thinking, how the weather's gonna sound, and he'll usually call me and just go at it. Sounds like, you know, they're pulling the plot always, or, you know, they're, these other companies are shutting down, this is what the weather's saying, then usually me and him make a decision on if we're gonna close the courthouse or not, um. I told him, since the forecast seems to be so solid, I mean. That we're, we, I pretty much told him that we'll probably end up closing the courthouse for tomorrow. We're gonna wait, but I basically told him, like, he doesn't need to communicate back and forth to me seventeen times a day, when we know. Most likely tomorrow's supposed to be really awful, so. And even with like today, I just kind of went around to the different offices and said that. Watch the window, if it looks like you think it's getting rough, or you know your road is kind of hippie, just go, so.
So what, um, do they advertise that at all, when they close it?
When they close the courthouse, usually, they'll be able to put it on Facebook page, and, and, uh. Yeah, that's about it, barely. Be pretty willing to bet, nobody's gonna make it to town, but mind open the doors, we lock tomorrow, unless they're really wrong on the forecast, and usually. We usually wait to close it till probably, generally, they close at about ten to ten fifteen, because we usually watch the tempo, because that's the best indicator for the weather. So I would say Gary, you know. Usually what he does is he sends a group text out to the department heads, letting them know, then they respond back that they got it, and then we put it on Facebook and. And stuff like that, so, but. Pretty good indicator that tomorrow the courthouse is probably gonna be closed. I'll look at them later. Well, I guess that's one thing we probably could discuss, since we're still kind of on that topic, the agenda is. They're all closed, right? We have all the applications we're going to get?
Everything's spoke?
Well, as far as the tax director and the VA circle, so the next question is, is. Who wants to be on the hiring committee and who wouldn't want to win? I'll volunteer to be on one of them, be one of the members.
I guess I could be, it would be being on your team.
Well, I would say. Me and Gary, and then maybe, maybe either Marlis or Gary Sandrick, or Jill Lanson, or somebody every battle, or like a few thirds. One of you guys should be available to do something.
So what if, what if they don't turn up?
What do you mean?
One of these doesn't turn out to be.
Yeah, if we don't turn anybody, I guess you'll play it up again.
I will tell you that there's a lot of work to be done.
With our auditor's office.
Tax Director?
Tax Director.
Yeah, I'll go to the end of this year. So just extra sheets for the.
So, these people move? Five percent gap?
Say, Aaron, if you, did you, um, what, Pam, you're involved in any?
Well, unless Pam can, I know we're just, I mean, talking about this pay scale stuff, she sounded like she was pretty busy, so that's why. I mean, if she wants to be a part of it, that'd be great, that would make it. Think you sure ask her. Gary, what days work best for you, if you want to do them interviews?
Tuesday or Wednesday.
I'd say we could probably schedule all of them that day, maybe on our seat, like, try and do the. Do the tax director and the VA one in the same day, and just wipe them all out, since we'll have, what, seven interviews total? If everybody shows up. Tuesday or Wednesday, you said?
Next week would be working, I'd say, whatever that, yeah.
Wouldn't you say Wednesday?
Tuesday, really, it would work absolutely best. Wednesday morning, you know, Wednesday afternoon, sometimes you gotta help, but fuck, three o'clock for it, yeah.
I'm thinking either April eighteenth or April twenty-fifth, then, would be Tuesday, would be Tuesday, either two weeks from now or three weeks from now. I'll try them out, whatever Pam says will work, then maybe we can talk, and if one of them works with us, we'll do it. We'll just set them all up for that day, do the. Do the tax director ones in the morning, and the VA one after lunch, or vice versa, whatever. Well, the, the VA one's gonna take longer, because there's more applicants, so. Try to do that in the morning, and then do the after lunch, do the tax director or something.
I, I think, um, Josh, it's been on my VA one, I think it's nice to have a bit.
Oh, that, yeah, I mean. I just think a third person would be good, two commissioners and whoever, I, I was just. Whoever's available, usually in the courthouse, an apartment that fits in, whatever, but yeah, Josh, that would be fine with that too, actually. And then if Pam wants to sit in too, then great. Four people's not bad either.
I can't hear you, what about Adella for the other one? Then I, then I don't have to involve, we have three.
Well, you can ask Pam, she wants to be part of it, I guess, and just see. Hey, I'm telling you what, it looks better outside than I thought it was this time of day already.
And the thing, the full day, because they got too many days to make up, they're. Liz was after doing the virtual learning, but it means that, uh.
Yeah.
Sure noticed that fuel bill on a winter like this, huh? Sure noticed that fuel bill on a winter like this. When we think about it, it was what, Veterans the weekend? Veterans Day or day before, when we had our first one, and it's been. I mean, you're talking.
I had another day in Brooklyn, getting back, you were for vacation, my Brooklyn North side. Nice about that, Rick, and snow on drop, it's crystal light, it snows crystal light, and it started dripping down a damn window.
Well, that's what's happened, we're built a dam underneath, and then it comes back in.
But you gotta build a dam, and it was coming in probably a vent around the Brooklyn coming down.
I know Ed had that issue with it all with his chimney, because it just built around the chimney there, and then the chimney melted a little bit, and it just dams up, and then. It started just kind of dripping down the chimney. Which part of Arizona?
You know, the two of the basin, banks, whatever. Yes, it was down.
Then the rock guys, like, the people who saw that movie thing?
You know, we talked to other areas, but that neither part about that, it's just, when your, your local department, they take vacation then, and then they come back. And they don't get credit for those hours, they, then they work the weekend or four, forty hours, and they, you know. Where vacation should be part of their hours. And then they get overtime when they get their forty hours, you know what I get that? So they take vacation, Monday and Tuesday, and then you bring them back, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. You know, whatever, and then, instead of getting overtime that Saturday, they're working straight time. It's almost like it should be overtime, anything, complete vacation included, is overtime, otherwise they have a penalty and they don't want to come back.
Yeah, I don't know.
But then the people that are here, they're just able, for example, to work that Saturday, the other person that took a few days off, and now he's working Saturday at regular time, you know, for getting overtime.
Well, I just remembered, like, when I worked at the coal mine and stuff, if you took like eight hours that weekend, and you ended up working Saturday, you had to work like. Over forty-eight to get your overtime, like, kind of like what you're saying, like. Because you didn't get paid overtime for taking vacation time, but. I guess really, it's not that big, it's the same difference whether you take vacation time or you work that day, so it's a.
It's just that on the weekends.
Right, I get that, like what you're saying, you take Monday off for a dentist appointment, and then you end up working Saturday and all that, and you don't get overtime for Saturday, because you took vacation on Monday, I see what you're saying.
Well, you're right, I don't know, I'm just saying, I can see the point.
Another thing to remember here, so like sundries, one thing they're doing that we had kind of gone over was that. So like some of these stuff, they're noting if it's like someone's driveway. But what they're not noting is like, like some of these driveways are like, they're section line roads, where we've always bladed them, so. If we're gonna look into that and charge for some of them or not, you know, because. What I told them guys originally is if, if you see a situation, or you get a request, or like Skylar comes in, it's like, we gotta get this person open, it's an emergency deal. Just make sure you track it separately, it didn't mean that we were necessarily gonna charge for it, you know, but. That it's tracked, so if we did want to go through it, so like sundries is doing that here, where they mentioned a couple of these guys, and a lot of it, it's like an hour, you know.
I thought this year we were letting that fill up.
Wait, well, I'm just telling you, though, that they are tracking that, if it's, if it gets to be where it's like. We're doing everything for everybody everywhere, they are tracking it separately, if we wanted to go back, and like, if some of these people are like, hey, I'll pay for that, they are tracking. Like, if it's out of the ordinary type, like, and I don't mean the out of the ordinary, like if Skylar, like they did something, and then. They didn't know if it was supposed to get done per se, like if a blade always does it, they wrote it down, and a lot of it, Skylar's like, yeah, it's stuff we do anyways, okay, but just tell them. Track everything like it's an individual job almost, you know, that way it, so. But that's why if you see some of this stuff, like so-and-so's driveway, it's probably Twelfth Avenue, but it went into their yard, so them guys wrote it down like it was their driveway, so.
I guess, I need to make sure we have a better idea.
Right, and that's where it gives you an idea too, for policy thing, I'm not saying they're going out cleaning people's driveway, it's just they're tracking everything, like. Basically, like they're doing an individual job for every little road almost, like they're writing down these avenues in their times, and so. Have you seen any of these gotta get fast-tracked downstairs to get taken care of or something, or? Okay, everyone's starting.
There were, there was that lease payment that was due. He said the law yesterday, if he wanted to make sure they got it.
The blades? Yeah. I know, I know Jody had kind of stayed late and did some extra stuff, to make sure it got done before the storm, so, yeah. Court for Services, I believe, is the sheriff's department. For outfitting vehicles, usually, radials, lights, stuff like that, thing. Out of Minnesota? Yeah, it's probably for the new sheriff's, very good candidate. I think we gotta afford this one, right? You hate to wish it on other people, right, but you're like, man, I don't want, I, I, every time you do it, you feel guilty, like, go south, go east, and you're like, then more people are like, go north, go west. You gotta feel bad for like Aberdeen in that area down there, they've been getting hammered, just terrible, though.
Our son, our old son is down there, he sent us some pictures.
I mean, that middle, that, that central to. Well, they've been getting like the last two or three that we've been missing, we've been, oh, we're lucky we missed it, they've been getting twelve, eighteen inch. Central, central South Dakota's gotten horribly, horribly hit, I mean, it's been bad. I feel bad for my guys when I see it.
Does it look like it's been a nice day?
Well, it's, um, but. You know, because if it keeps twenty, so it won't be that bad, but who knows?
And then we're like twenty nine, yeah.
What, the thing, then it circles around?
Yeah, sometimes it can go too far, you're right, where it comes back around, where it might have missed.
The green is. Over to that, the green was just kind of.
They're gonna go to school down. Gonna have to go to school down there.
That wind is something, it don't matter what we get for snow, even the snow we have, we get fifty mile an hour, what would it did on Friday, that was terrible. Yeah. I mean, even, even Old Ten, you know, like, people were calling me and they were like, hey, the gravel road's got snow on it, I'm like, I'm driving one lane on Old Ten right now, like, I mean. I actually thought the gravel, when I got back home, was better than eighty-three and Old Ten when I went to Bismarck. Cause at least that, you had some traction, it was slick and there was only one lane on Old Ten.
Yeah, we came back from Minot Friday night in the bus. And it was, Old Ten was awful, I was real slow, and then we got the steering, and they said eighty-three is closed, so I walked, it was hot.
Yeah.
The lights around Ableton, we drove there.
Yes, there it was.
Old Ten was terrible, yeah, that was. Well, anything east-west that day was just getting.
Then the interstate here was still closed, we could have got on early, but I will take why we take now. I can see all the way you.
What amazed me more than anything was, uh, how it melted this weekend, I just can't believe it, like, just some grass started showing up and.
And the deer found it.
Oh, yeah. Oh, they got nowhere else to stand? They got to stand on the dang babe, but they got nowhere else to stand. Went to that six county meeting in, uh.
Napoleon.
In Napoleon there that day. That was a rugged drive, dude, thinking about it, that was terrible. But, um. Kidder County's got eleven dozers going.
When I found out the wind was.
But they got so many contractors that, you know, and they have a handful of townships that bring their own in, it's like, cause they still have like six or seven org. That wouldn't miss this, and they have eleven dozers that are out working. But they got that one, they got Hofer's, they're like a gravel contractor, like the sundries, they got like four or five dozers, but they said, yeah, they had eleven dozers working in Kidder County, and he said, they can't catch up, he said, they had. They had one spot, the dozer had to open the road. And he said that dozer had it pushed up like twenty-five feet, like they had, like, he said, the snow was just. He said there was some, he goes, that's what they were saying, cause we were talking about another storm coming that time, and they were like, we're done, like, we don't know what we're gonna do. There's, some of these roads will not get opened again, they're gonna have to get people with a helicopter, you know, you're like. So. Well, if you guys are done looking at the bills, let entertain a motion to adjourn. Make sure everybody makes a motion to adjourn. Meeting adjourned.